Commissioner Scavdall?
Present.
Commissioner Levy?
Present.
Commissioner Mulder?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner West?
Here.
Commissioner Curiazi?
Here.
Commissioner McFarland?
Here.
All present. Welcome, everybody. Full commissions, first in a little while. Director Ford, any agenda modifications this evening?
We have no modifications to the agenda. You do have on the dais several recent communications that have come in. Most of them are also shown on meeting details. I'll just point out for those who may be watching, the Brett Marth letter, which is in support of the Henderson subdivision is blank on the website, but you do have a copy of it here.
Thank you. At this point, we'll take a public comment on non-agenda items. So if anybody would like to address the commission this evening on a matter that's within our jurisdiction but is not on our agenda this evening, now's the time to do so. Please approach the podium, or if you're online, raise your hand. Online by pressing, I can't remember if it's star nine to raise your hand?
Star six to raise your hand.
Star six. Star six to raise your hand. So I'll give you a second. I don't see anybody in the room approaching podium, and I don't see any hands up online. So we'll close public comment on non-agenda items, and we'll move to the consent agenda. We have, how many items on consent this evening? Six. Six items on consent. I'll read each item off. I'll check with my fellow commissioners to see if anybody would like to pull an item from consent for discussion, and I'll also check with the audience and online to see if anybody would like to, if anybody has a comment or wants to speak to these items that are on consent. We will pull those, and we will hear them later in the meeting after the workshop.
Chair, if I could, I head it backwards. Star nine to raise your hand, star six.
Sorry, I should read that every time. Star nine to raise your hand. And so as I go through these, if you're online and you want to pull something, press star nine so I'll know, and we'll pull that item. So first item on consent is review and approval of our June 26 action summary. Members of the commission, check we're good. The members of the public, I see no hands, and I see none online. That'll remain on consent. Item two is Eagles Nest Farm, conditional use permit in the White Thorne area. Commissioner Curiazi would like us to pull that item, so we'll pull item two. Item three, Gantieri LLC conditional use permit McKinleyville area. Check with the commission. See no, none, and in the room, online, I see no hands. So item three remains on consent. Item four, U-Haul Building signage, conditional use permit modification in the McKinleyville area.
I'd like that one.
Okay. Commissioner would like to pull that item for discussion, so item four we will pull. Item five, Moser Properties Extension of Parcel Map Subdivision. Commissioners, Moser Properties, checking in the room, and online, I see no hands. Remains on consent. And item six, an ordinance amending Title III, Division III, chapters one, two, and four of the Humboldt County Code, and a bunch of sections. Cleaning up some application processes and procedures. And commissioners, seeing no hands in the, so checking in the room and online, I see no hands. Remains on consent. So I have, that we're going to pull items two and four. If you have a motion, please.
I would move that we approve items one, three, five, and six of the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Levy, and a second.
All second.
By Commissioner Curiazi. Voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Okay, so we'll take up items two and four later in the agenda, and now we will open public hearings, and we have one item on public hearing, the Henderson Parcel Map subdivision. And Director Ford, we'll start with staff report.
Good evening. My name's Michael Holtermann. I'm the planner assigned to the Henderson Parcel Map subdivision application. It's application number 19178. We're going to start with the project location. The parcel in question is two APNs. They're highlighted in blue. That comprise one legal parcel. It's approximately 130 to 140 feet from the city of Arcata jurisdiction. We also have the zoning layer turned on, so the commission can see the zoning of the properties in the general vicinity. Next, we have the parcel, the tentative map submitted by the applicant. Essentially, the applicant is wanting to split a 4.6 acre parcel into a 1.6 acre parcel and a three acre parcel. The minimum parcel size required by the zone is two and a half acres, so the applicant is requesting a minimum lot size modification. That code section is up on screen, but for the purposes of this discussion tonight, there's only two sections that we're really going to focus on in this presentation. First is a requirement that the average size of resulting parcels must meet the minimum size required by the zone and the general plan designation. The second is overall conformance to Humboldt County general plan. So the applicant is applying for variance and making a case for general plan and community plan conformance. Variance findings are shown on screen here. Again, there's a little bit up there, but the only ones we're really going to focus on for the purposes of this presentation are the requirements that the applicant must demonstrate that there are special circumstances applicable to the property that would deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity under identical zoning classification. And the second is any variance granted must be granted under such conditions that it doesn't constitute a grant of special privileges. Moving on, the applicant has mentioned in their justification that the parcel was originally subdivided from a 10 acre parcel with the intent to further subdivide in the future down to four two and a half acre parcels. Intent to further subdivide does not constitute a special circumstance, does not vest policies or zoning requirements in place at the time of subdivision. Here we have a map that's included with the staff report. This shows the parcels in the vicinity. It includes parcels in a contiguous area that have identical zone classification within the urban development area as mapped by the Jacoby Creek Community Plan. The average size of the parcels in this map are 2.45 to 2.48 acres, so the proposed subdivision would not meet either the minimum parcel size requirement or the average size of parcels in the zone. The subdivision approval would constitute a grant of special privileges, as no other parcels have been allowed to subdivide below 2.5 acres per parcel in that zone. There are information requests that have been attached to the staff report, that's attachment three, that does show the county has consistently applied these standards. So next, we're going to talk about general plan and community plan consistency, and so we're going to start with a few policies from the Jacoby Creek Community Plan. First is policy 26, which does allow residential development at a one unit per five acre density in the urban development area, provided the standards A through D are met. This does allow for onsite water and sewer, again, but only at a one unit per five acre density. The next policy of note is 27, which specifies that full buildout is only allowable when public water and sewer are available specifically for development within the urban development area. The applicant is, in their justification, saying that this is an error, but the UDA mapping is not an error and therefore applicability is not an error. The parcel is, again, within 140 feet of the city of Arcata jurisdiction, so it's not unreasonable to expect the eventual provision of water and sewer to the area even if it is in the far future. The Jacoby Creek Community Plan did contemplate appropriate parcel sizes and density for the urban development area in the event that no services were available. Again, that's policy 26 that we discussed earlier. Additionally, the original Jacoby Creek Community Plan included findings to justify these policies that indicated development is dependent on public water and sewer, at least in part because development had reached maximum capacity in some neighborhoods and failing septic systems and surface water contamination had been documented in the area. No studies have been completed since that time to show increased development would have no detrimental impact on surface or groundwater resources. Also, policy 39 from the Jacoby Creek Community Plan stipulates that any residential estates designated lands, which this parcel is, cannot go below five acres per unit until public water is available. Of note, this applies to parcels inside the urban development area, urban expansion area, or rural area. This is across the board for residential estates. And finally, Jacoby Creek Community Plan policies notwithstanding, the proposal's inconsistent with the general plan density. The general plan density for the area is 2.5 to 5 acres per unit, so a maximum density of 2.5 acres per unit. This proposal is 2.3 acres per unit. So to reiterate, the project does not comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The project cannot meet the required findings for variance. It is inconsistent with the general plan and Jacoby Creek Community Plan, and because of that, staff is recommending that the commission find the project exempt from CEQA as a project that is disapproved, find the project does not comply with Humboldt County general plan, community plan, or zoning ordinance, and deny the parcel map subdivision application. That's the end of the presentation. If you have any questions, staff's available.
Chair, if I could interrupt before you get started. You know, this is one of those projects that probably deserves ex parte, just to disclose any discussions that have been had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, before we move on, are there any ex parte discussions that need to be disclosed? No commissioners have spoken directly with the applicant or visited the property. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, before I open the public hearing, do you have any questions of staff with respect to the staff report? Not getting into discussion at this time, but if you just need any questions or clarifications to staff. Commissioner Curiazi?
Through the chair, with respect to the Jacoby Creek Plan, when it uses the term "full buildout," can you clarify, does full buildout mean one unit per five acres?
Full buildout wasn't a term that was used in the plan. That was just the way I phrased it. It's actually development at densities that are allowed under the general plan, something to that effect. So the 2.5 to 5 acres that's allowed for this particular area, but it is area by area.
Thank you. Commissioner McFarland?
I don't know how you could clearly answer this, but I guess what I'm getting hung up on is you keep referencing the average parcel with the 2.5 as the trigger, but there's clearly parcels that exist that are well below that. So if we have pre-existing smaller parcels, why are we so committed to using this arbitrary average?
I think the thing that you need to look at is the findings that Mr. Holtermann brought up in the plan identified that there is already a substantial amount of development. There's already, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was the neighborhood of 700 to 800 units that were existing there. So those smaller parcels existed. So based upon the findings that are there, based upon the density that was put into place, it's apparent the decisions that were made were based upon a sense that the area had reached its carrying capacity with wells and septic. And so those lower density maximums were put into place to compensate for that.
Any other questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I can't quite find the line in the written staff report, but I believe that it said something to the effect of while there's a procedure for a variance to zoning regulations, there is no procedure for granting a variance to the general plan itself. Could you elaborate on that? Is there anything more that you can say to explain that? Well, the variance provisions come out of the Humboldt County Code, and so they specifically do refer to the ability to seek a waiver or an exception to the zoning standards. There is no such provision in the general plan itself. Does that mean that the general plan, saying what it says here, there is simply no legal way to not comply with it? I mean, there's maybe variance is not the right word if that's applicable to a zoning ordinance, but any comparable way to, I don't know, grant an exception or overrule the general plan, and I'm not saying we should or that I want to, I just want to understand whether that's really a bright line that can't be crossed.
The general plan does not include provisions to deviate from it. The general plan as a whole is much more, pardon the adjective, but general. And so it does not include precise development standards like the zoning ordinance does. It gives guidance in terms of what it should look like, the density that it should be, and it doesn't allow deviations from that.
Maybe a better way of phrasing my question is, I recall many other cases where we have, where a project has sought and we have granted or not granted a general plan amendment. Could that apply to a situation like this?
Absolutely. That is something that's been discussed with the applicant. To get to where the applicant really wants to go would involve modifying the Jacoby Creek Community Plan and the general plan.
So in this case, it's not just the individual designation of their parcel, it's modifying the whole Jacoby Creek plan since they're bound by that.
The applicable policies are applied to more than this parcel, so yes.
Right. Okay. Okay, thanks.
I have something. What is the requirement for wastewater, the size of the parcels, that two and a half acres or five? Because when you put in an onsite wastewater system, you have to have the leach field area, plus you have to have a reserve area in case your leach field fails. So to go below the requirements for what's required for onsite, now if they were in the city, it would be a completely different thing if they're on a community wastewater system, but when you're on a leach field onsite and you start downsizing parcels, then it becomes a health and safety issue.
For the, those are the Department of Environmental Health standards, and they would permit a septic system, in fact, a separate, an additional septic system on a parcel of this size. So that's not.
That's not an issue?
That's not an issue in this case.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions from commissioners staff at this point, we'll open the public hearing. Applicant or the applicant's agent is welcome to address the commission, and you have up to 10 minutes to address us, and then anybody else that wants to address the commission will have three minutes, and I will offer the applicant an opportunity to come back and address any other comments that might be presented by the public if there are any. So can you please set the timer for 10 minutes, and you have the floor?
I have the floor. Thank you. Larry Henderson, co-applicant for the subdivision. My wife cannot be here tonight, unfortunately, but she's here mentally supporting me. But I think that I've pretty much exhausted all my testimony to the planning commission. I don't think I can add anything else, but there is one point that I want to make, one simple point. This is a policy matter, not a law matter. The law allows me to subdivide. This is not a case where the, where we can't subdivide. This is, to the contrary, the case where we may subdivide if your commission, at its discretion, approves it using common sense. That's the bottom line. You get your choice. You can deny it, or you can approve it. If you like the subdivision, you can approve it. If you don't like the subdivision, you can deny it. And I think that I've, the best thing I can do is just answer the questions that you have, but I do have a request because I am hard of hearing. I wasn't prepared. I did not hear the answers that were given to you. So I would be, I would love to be able to answer the questions from my side if you think, if they did not satisfy your answer, but please bear with me. Obviously, my voice is shot, and I can't hear, but I'll do the best I can to answer your questions. Thank you. Do you want to wait till?
Thank you. We will not engage in a three-way discussion between staff and yourself and the commission. I'm sorry that you can't hear. You're welcome to sit up at this front table if that would help you.
That would.
Hear a little bit better. You're welcome to sit there.
Okay.
But again, the public hearing opportunity is for you to present your information to us. If anybody else from the public wants to present information to us, but once I close the public hearing, we're going to discuss amongst ourselves. We made direct questions to staff, but I'm not going to take any more information or commentary from you.
Excuse me. I understand that, but am I correct that you are saying that I do not get the chance to rebut if I hear something that's obviously wrong being given to the planning commission?
That's correct.
Okay.
If in your position you disagree with the comments, and I think you've already stated that quite well in your public comments and in your letters that we have. So we've taken already your testimony, and we've all read it.
Thank you.
Okay?
I'm Kimberly Clark with Almsberg &amp; Preston. We're acting agent for Mr. Henderson. And is this couple, is that better? And there, a couple things I wanted to point out that don't seem to be being focused on regarding the 2020 ADU minutes or recordings, where it states it was all regarding ADUs. When, I actually have an outline with timestamps of those meetings, and when Michael Richardson opened up the discussion on the JCCP, he very clearly stated that the density issue applied to subdivisions as well as the second units. And I have copies of that if you guys want that. Another issue I wanted to ask, talk about was on the past lot line adjustment done in 86. This property was found to be not located within a resource area of critical concern as documented by the Jacoby Creek Community Plan and its associated environmental document. The cumulative effect of this project and other lot line adjustments in the area are not significant, but it was found that this property was not one of those that were affected negatively by the impacts of failing septic systems. And the last thing is about the city of Arcata. We have a copy of emails from Joe Maitre stating that the city of Arcata has no intention of ever annexing this property into their system or providing services for them. And that's one of the changes that we are claiming is a change to the plan. And so I've got copies of that email. If you'd like, need to see those.
Thank you.
Hello. I am Matthew Henderson. I am Larry and Eileen's son. I am here presenting this for my mom. She and her brother inherited the two properties that we are talking about today. The properties were both a little over five acres. My uncle sold his, or sold his to a couple, the Morrisons, who wanted to build their home on a particular site with a view. The site turned out to be right on the property line, and they wanted to do a line adjustment to add land from my mom's property to theirs to complete the view site. The property was zoned for 2.5 acres minimum, provided they would be hooked up to water. They drew up plans to divide the two parcels into four that averaged over 2.6 acres. This was permitted at the time. The idea was that mom and dad would have their home site, the Morrisons would have their home site, the front original 1.6 acre lot would be sold, as would the fourth vacant parcel. The problem was that they could not get water service. The area was outside the water district, and the city said, the city said the system did not have enough pressure to serve the area. The only option then was to complete the line adjustment that would have ended up with my parents having less than five acres. They did this only after discussions with many, including people with the county planning department where my dad worked. Mom says everyone felt it was common sense that if a four-way subdivision is allowed when water is available, my parents' parcel could also be split under the same conditions. Nobody said the split might not be permitted. Believe me, my mother would not have done the adjustment if there was any risk of never being able to sell the 1.6 acre lot. It's a catch-22. The subdivision can function with or without water services, but can't because it can't obtain the service. Thank you.
Excuse me, just a question. Are you saying water is or was, is available at that property, or is not?
We have had tests done that water from our well can be provided.
Okay, but no, not public water?
Not public water. The city of Arcata says they have no intention of ever taking public water to there because there's not enough water pressure.
Okay, thank you. I just, at one point, I thought I understood you to say you couldn't divide it into four pieces until water was available, and then I thought you said water was available. I just want to.
Public water, yes.
And public water is not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody else in the room wants to speak on this item, and/or if anybody online or on the phone wants to speak, it's star nine to raise your hand. I see no, I see no hands or anybody in the room. Mr. Henderson, I'm going to ask you one more time if there's anything else you want to say before I close the public hearing.
I don't understand. I mean, obviously, I want to be involved, yes. Is there anything I want to say?
Anything you want to say to address the commission with now?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I do want to clarify because of this question. First of all, the Golf Course Road neighborhood is not within the Jacoby Creek Water District. It is not now, and it was not back then when the plan was adopted. The situation was that it was in the Arcata service area to where they had at that time planned to provide services. But, and this, we tried back then to get water. It would have been to our advantage to have, be able to sell parcels rather than have the five, but we tried again. First of all, the Goff Course Road neighborhood is not within the Jacoby Creek Water District. It is not now, and it was not back then when the plan was adopted. The situation was that it was in the Arcata service area to where they had at that time planned to provide services. But, and this, we tried back then to get water. It would have been to our advantage to have, be able to sell parcels rather than have the five, but we tried again, and actually, we've been trying to continue as well as like six months ago, but way back even when they looked at the ADU ordinance, the city said, "We changed our mind. We are not going to provide any services to this area because we do not have the pressure to serve that area. We have to improve the system. We can't do it. We won't do it. You don't get services." So that's the change. But the, the, well, the change is that there may have been legitimacy when they adopted the plan, but when the city went on record and refused to give services, that changed the whole situation. And I will add that back then, when the plan was adopted, and I believe this is true, but definitely during the ADU ordinance, the only piece of property in that area that didn't have water and was already subdivided was our property. So we look at it from the point of strictly infill of the Goff Course Road neighborhood. It's not any addition, it's compatible with it, and that's what the whole premise has been going on. And I, I think, I will suggest that because you have no opposition to the subdivision, that's a good indication that the neighborhood sees this as a logical move. That parcel is within the neighborhood, the only vacant parcel that's there. It's the only available one. Okay. All right, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
I just want to note that it looks like in the packet we have here, there's possibly two letters of opposition, but neither one of them seem to be signed, so.
This is a read and pass. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring this back to the commission for discussion and ultimately a decision.
I guess, can I ask that question to staff just to clarify?
Yes.
So the way I'm reading this packet of public comment that was given to us today, there's two letters that are unsigned, so not, what could be considered anonymous letters that are opposing it. They're claiming neighbors, but is that also, I'm just confused how it couldn't just be an anonymous person that maybe isn't in the neighborhood? Is there a way staff verifies that but protects the identity? Tough question, but I'm just trying to clarify for myself.
So we did get calls in response to the public notice, and I believe they spoke, well, they spoke to Mr. Holtermann here. But my understanding is that they did not want to submit letters and identify who they were. And so Mr. Holtermann advised them that they could submit letters without identifying it. We don't happen to know where they live, but those calls were in response to the public notice, which was sent to people within 300 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Turn back to the commission for discussion. Mr. Kirozzi.
I wanted to address, I've seen the reference to the ADU amendments that were discussed and passed in 2020, and I'm a little confused exactly on how that relates to this. So I was, I was wondering if staff could, should help clarify why the ADU thing keeps coming up.
So the reason why that has come up is when the county was adopting the ADU ordinance in response to state law around 2020, the, it was identified that the Jacoby Creek Community Plan had originally at least had some public health and safety concerns relative to sewer and water. And one of the options for the commission at the time was to adopt the ADU ordinance, but limit ADUs in the Jacoby Creek area to this one unit per five acre density. So that came up, that was a discussion, and in, the commission decided to not have that be a requirement, that ADUs in the Jacoby Creek area could, could be permitted just like anywhere else in the county. But they did direct staff to pursue a, at least to revisit some of the Jacoby Creek Community Plan policies regarding density. So the, the whole context of that discussion was about ADUs. The applicant believes that there's, there was an intent from the Planning Commission to have the county consider amending the density standards, not just for ADUs. It's unclear, at least in my view, and I did go back and re-watch the, the meeting, it's unclear what the intention of the Planning Commission was relative to density in there. I think there were a few members here that were on the commission at the time who might recall as well. So I think that's why it's, it's coming up, this issue.
So to, so to be clear, the applicant could put an ADU on this parcel?
Yes, that is correct.
I have a couple of other questions, just back to densities. I, I have a bit of a concern about the precedent, precedent-setting nature of, of this. If we were to allow a subdivision of a parcel down to 1.4 acres, I didn't study all the other parcel sizes in the neighborhood, but I suspect there could be parcels of three acres, so you could subdivide those into have two 1.5 acre parcels. I'm concerned about the slippery slope that can be created by making an exception for a property like this and then having other applicants come and make similar arguments that we're hearing here, that, well, you did it once before, or you, the intent of the commission was, whatever. So can you advise on that? I mean, the parcel sizes out there, if we allowed something to go to 1.4 acres, I, I suspect there would be other parcels that could be subdivided under potentially similar circumstances or similar arguments.
If, so to set the precedent that a parcel could be subdivided below what the zoning allows could potentially open up a lot of additional subdivision. I, I do think it's important to note, though, that the applicant's argument is that this is one of the larger parcels in the area, and that if he were permitted to subdivide to what is essentially an average of 2.3 acres, there would only be, I believe, one or a few other parcels that would be able to, to subdivide to that, to that size. Now, 2.3, 1.5, you know, is, once you start to make that exception to, to the zoning, it's unclear where that would stop.
Yes, Commissioner, last.
So we heard from the applicant in testimony, an argument that staff was basing their findings based on policy and that he believed that the law still allowed him to subdivide. But the way I understand staff's presentation, that these are not policies, but they are, they are, ordinances are a part of the laws of Humboldt County's operations, is that?
So I can kind of jump in on that?
Yeah.
It's, the applicant's not entirely wrong about law and policy. The ordinances are adopted by ordinance, the zoning ordinance is an ordinance. General plan, the Jacoby Creek Community Plan was adopted by resolution, doesn't carry the same weight as law. However, in order to approve a subdivision, you, the Planning Commission, has to make the finding that it's consistent with the general plan and the Jacoby Creek Community Plan. So to say that you don't have to follow that is, is not true. I mean, the Subdivision Map Act mandates that.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Commissioner Levy.
Okay, thanks. Well, I, I want to pick up on a point, an interesting point, I think, that is made in the Brett Marth and Time Francis letter, which is part of this packet we got today. As I understand it, Brett Marth and Time Francis are the owners of the 6.6 acre parcel that was originally owned along with the 4.6 parcel in question by the Henderson family and which the Morrisons obtained in the earlier years. Is that, is that correct? Because that, that's just sort of the premise of my question. They, they say in this letter, near the end, "The only conceivable reason for not granting the variance is for strict adherence to ownership requirements in subdivisions. In this sense, an owner of both properties A and B is able to subdivide the land, whereas an owner of only property B cannot." If I follow what I think they're saying, they're asserting that if this owner, the Hendersons, still owned both of these parcels, 6.6 acres and 4.6 acres, I guess this is the question. If they did own those two parcels, and it was in fact the same ownership, but they were in their present configuration of 4.6 acres for the smaller, 6.6 for the larger, would that change the analysis that you would go through in a request to subdivide the smaller 4.6 acre parcel? The fact that they also own this bigger parcel and that you could think of it all as an 11 acre conglomerate, but you'd still be dealing with trying to divide a 4.6 acre parcel into two that were smaller than 2.5.
Well, yeah, and so in that instance, they would have over 10 acres, and so they could, they would essentially merge it into one parcel and subdivide it back into.
They would have to merge it first.
It could be done essentially at the same time as part of the map, but, so yes, that could happen under the zoning. They still would have the requirement to be consistent with the general plan and the community plan, which, which is the five acre standard.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Commissioner McFarland.
Staff, or Director Ford, you had mentioned that you had spoken with the applicant about the possibility of an amendment to the general plan or the Jacoby Creek plan. And so I'm just wondering if the bar here is to find consistency with those two. It's not to invoke any common sense, or yes, there's already existing parcels, but if it's to find consistency, so if we struggle to do that, I'm just wondering what the applicant said their interest level was in amending the plans and how long that would take and if it's doable.
My recollection is that they wanted to appear in front of you and present their
And if we went the other route, what does that time look like?
If we went down a, a general plan amendment route, part of the, the need is really then to look at what the septic capacity is to study the area, study the groundwater in the area, see if it's in a state of equilibrium or if it's declining. And, you know, that, that takes time and, and money.
So if we can't find the, the bar of the proposal being consistent with the two plans, the applicant has, what other routes do they have to, or the applicant has no other route to subdivide or increase density on this parcel beyond the single ADU?
The, the policy needs to be changed in order to get to the map that's being requested. That is absolutely true. How, you know, it's, it's, it's a slippery slope to start to change policies that appear based upon the findings that are in the original plan to have been put in place based upon concerns of septic.
So the, the parcel that has three developments on it must have been pre-existing, right?
You're talking about this parcel that was subdivided?
No, there's one down the street that has a higher density. I just had the map.
Yeah.
So they couldn't get put four dwellings.
I think in sympathy for the applicant, there's a lot of parcels out there that are smaller than the 1.6 that's being asked for. But when you take a step back to the 30,000-foot level and you look at what the plan was looking at, there was already a significant amount of development. It appeared that that development was affecting water quality, didn't have the capacity to support additional development. So that's why the policies were put in place.
So last question, could you caveat the subdivision with only water storage had to be provided with any development and an above-ground, obviously very expensive, but an above-ground sewer, you know, personal sewage treatment?
I, I think the, the step that had, would have to go forward is that the policy in the plan would need to be changed to allow that before the map could be approved. You couldn't just say, okay, we're going to mitigate for the concern without addressing the policy, because your requirement is to find it consistent with the plan.
Yes, Commissioner Muldoon.
So for me, I'm looking at the map that was presented as public comment, and I, I hear policy and all that stuff, and it, it is very challenging for me to wrap my head around how many small parcels there are. And I understand maybe some rules were put in place, someone, people subdivided beforehand, but that's, looking at this map is what's making it challenging for me to not find a pathway forward. And knowing, I mean, I guess there is the ability for the ADU, so technically, there could be two residential units on this one partial. Is there any way, I'm not saying the applicant would even be agreeable, but is there any way the county could do the subdivision, but only let one residential unit per partial? So then in essence, there wouldn't be a net gain in residential developments? It's just something that went through my mind. Obviously, the applicant would have to be okay with that. I'm just, I'm thinking of the concern, there's sea, water and wastewater and water. So if you can technically have two residential developments, the way the code is now, is there a way to do the subdivision and, and still only have two residential developments if the applicant was agreeable to those kind of restrictions potential?
I'd hate to just kind of be rigid on this.
I'm totally fine with that.
But it, it is important to remember that you're making a finding about consistency with the community plan and general plan. So you can mitigate it all over the place, but if it's still not fundamentally consistent with the community plan and general plan, you're going outside of the direction of the general plan.
Okay, totally fine with that. I was just trying to think of a way to, pathway forward and.
And, and let me just say, I mean, I spent some time looking at the surrounding area. There's a lot of smaller parcels out there. It's like, sometimes you ask yourself, it's like, okay, what are we trying to do here? But then as you pan back in the area that Mr. Holtermann showed, there's some very big parcels out there.
I saw that part as well.
Yeah.
So, all right, well.
I just have one quick question. So since this plan, the Jacoby, I don't know anything about it, but the Jacoby Creek Plan was approved, there hasn't been any subdivisions made that would make this not consistent with other changes that you've made or approved?
I'm aware of at least two subdivisions that have happened in the Jacoby Creek Community Plan, but they were two five acre parcels.
Okay.
That were the, the result.
Nothing this small?
No, not on an average parcel size. I think there may have been one that did take advantage of the lot size modification. So if you have 10 acres, you could create, let's say, a six acre parcel and a four acre because they average at five. I think there may have been one that did that, but none to below that five acre average.
And it wouldn't, it wouldn't have mattered if the parcels had been more evenly split, like in half, so that you had two that were close to two and a half? It still wouldn't have changed your mind because they weren't five acres?
It, it wouldn't have changed our, it wouldn't have changed the findings or our belief on, on what the Planning Commission should be finding.
So as far as your recommendation, there's nothing that he can do that would make him eligible for the subdivision short of changing the plan?
That is correct.
Okay, I'll just make a couple of comments on this. Okay, I'll just make a couple of comments on this. I also feel a high obligation to, as a commissioner, to the public health and safety, particularly not only to the potential future owners of parcels in this small subdivision, but to the surrounding parcels and, and people impacted by the Jacoby Creek Plan. So, and I think that those, those considerations are taken, the, the, other commissioners and, and the board of supervisors took all that into consideration when adopting the current zoning regulations and the planning criteria for the neighborhood. And I also believe that things do change and when people say water and sewer is not available to an area today, that doesn't mean forever, ever. Policies change, governments change, neighborhoods get together and organize when there's needs for infrastructure. So all those things can change. So for that reason, I can't support, I personally cannot support this, the subdivision at this time. But, and I just wanted to say that, want you to understand where I'm coming from. Commissioner Curieozzi.
Yeah, I was, in, in review, I, I kept going back to the health and safety as well and, and really looking at the, or trusting the reason why that the Jacoby Creek Plan put this in. And it struck me in the response to whether or not public health would permit a septic and saying that they would, that my read of that is that public health is also trusting the zoning and ordinance process because they're not going to look at the area as a whole. They're just going to look at that particular location and, you know, do the soil studies, et cetera, but, but they're trusting the, the ordinances in the process prior to make sure that we're looking at carrying capacity. And that with, in addition to our obligation to focus on consistency, I'm in that court as well as feeling like I agree with Staff's recommendation.
Commissioner West.
I think similar to you too, and also just to, I think, share where my decision is coming from. Like, I also, I think I, I hear the applicant's frustration that, that maybe the plans are not reflective of what's on the ground, but are, it is not within our purview to make an exception to the plan or change the plan at this hearing. As the director said, we'd have to go through a different process to change the plan. So our hands are, from my perspective, our hands are pretty tied in terms of the findings we can make based off of our obligations to be at the 30,000 foot level and look at the ordinances and policies and plans that we have in place. So for this reason, I'll be supporting Staff's recommendation.
Are we ready for a motion?
I just, for the record, just to confirm, the applicant does have the option of appealing this to the board of supervisors for a variance to general plan or all of that if they choose to, right?
Correct.
I-
Commissioner West.
I will motion that the commission adopts the following resolution that finds the project is exempt from environmental review, B finds the proposed, proposed project does not comply with the general plan and zoning ordinance, and C denies the Henderson Center, the Henderson parcel map subdivision.
I have a motion from Commissioner West. I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Curieozzi. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Commissioner Curieozzi.
If I could take a liberty to maybe speak for the commission as a whole, I think the pause in offering a motion reflects the challenge that we have in recognizing that this is a frustrating result. And I really appreciate the discussion by commissioners and trying to find a path forward on this.
Yeah, I do as well. I think we tested all the boundaries and, and limitations that we had.
I, yeah, I feel that I exhausted every last one, even that development one. And I appreciate the director being frank with everything, so.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner McFarland.
No.
Commissioner Curieozzi.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy.
Yes.
Commissioner Scavdahl.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, before we move to the next agenda item, I am going to ask Commissioner Curieozzi and I think it was Commissioner O'Neill, you each pulled an item from the consent calendar. Do you think it's going to be a long discussion or something that we could handle quickly?
For mine, I do have two questions, but I don't think the discussion would be very long and then one correction.
Okay.
I would just like to have a vote on it. I mean, we just passed a signage.
Yep, so that's fine. Okay, so Director Ford, were there to be any objection to taking those on before we opened the workshop?
I think that would be appropriate given the workshop will take as much time as we're allowed tonight.
Right. So I, I just didn't want to get into a time constraint at the end of the workshop and not take up these two matters that were pulled from consent.
Yeah.
I appreciate the suggestion. Do we want to take a break right now or do you want to go through those or do the two items? All right, let's do that and then we'll, then we'll take a break before we start the workshop. Okay, so the first item was Eagles Nest Farm LLC. And I will ask again, Commissioner Curieozzi, do you think we need a staff report or can we take questions?
I, I don't need a staff report, but I do have two questions that are specific-
Okay.
To it. So if other commissioners would like it, I'm okay with that. So I'll go ahead and ask my question.
These questions, if we may, and you have the floor.
Thank you. One, so I have two, one question regarding the resolution. We have this, a SEQA finding, or under the SEQA finding, it says that the generator will be bound to attenuate noise, but I didn't see this as a condition of approval. And I also want to acknowledge that there was public comment associated with noise. And so I wanted to just confirm that, either ask that that's a condition or confirm that that would be the case.
Ongoing condition number one is the combination of background generator and greenhouse fan or other non-operational equipment created noise must not result in harassment of the northern spotted owl species as required to meet the performance standards for noise set by Department Policy Standard Statement Number 16 dash 005. So the requirements, the combined noise levels measured at 100 feet of the edge of habitat, whichever is closer, or the edge of the habitat, whichever is closer, shall be at or below 50 decibels.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. I have two quick corrections. The resolution, the now therefore references the wrong applicant. At the, at the end of the resolution, the now therefore. And then it also references attachment one and it should be 1A. It's minor. And then lastly, I had a question about the synthetic netting. I was just, had a question to Staff on the status of the, what Planning Commission had discussed around bringing uniformity to synthetic netting. And I wanted to ask again, the plan was for that to be applied retroactively?
Yeah, we need to take that forward to the board. And we are putting together a, a few things related to the canvas industry that we're going to be taking forward, hopefully in August.
So that, that would go retroactively and apply to, or is it only projects going forward?
We, we want to find a way that we could address it retroactively. I'm not quite sure how that can be done yet. And so I, I don't want to commit to that, but we, we would like to have something done that is more of a universal action that goes back and corrects previous conditions. I've never seen that done before.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just, I'm assuming we'll continue to see this request from CDFW to prohibit synthetic netting and it seems to conflict with what we-
If, if I could, Chair?
Yeah.
They seem to have softened on that a little bit. They, they want it to be managed and disposed of properly. The thing that really can't be tolerated is wads of netting loose out in the open area.
But I, I noticed it is applied here. We're, we're prohibiting synthetic netting here per CDFW request.
I believe that they are still generally baking that comment to us. The other thing that we are doing is we want to make sure that all of these projects are consistent, have, have consistent conditions. And so, you know, we don't want to start waiving some of them for these people, you know, for, for new applicants until there's been a more global, global fix. We are enforcing them equally as well for, you know, so just try to be consistent is what we're doing.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes, Commissioner Levy. Quick comments since we're talking about things. Just kind of on that note, I noticed that this applicant is currently using a generator but is going to comply with the, or is being conditioned to switch to solar to renewable by January 1st, 2026. And that's been consistent. And we've been giving that date for a long time and now it's just a few months away. But I assume that they're fully aware that that requirement will, will be imposed soon.
I believe that they are aware of that. It is important to note also, they actually have not been cultivating for the last couple of years. So there's a number of things that they're going to need to kind of get in place before they, before they start cultivating.
Sure.
Okay, before, just want to make sure if anybody from the public wants to address the commission on, on this item or anybody online, again, star nine, to raise your hand. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring back the commission for a, a motion.
I'll move to adopt the resolution which finds the, the Eagles Nest application as, I'll just read it here. Finding the planning commission is considered the mitigated neglect of declaration previously, previously adopted for the commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance. It was prepared for the legal nest farm and finds the proposed project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance and approves the Eagle Nest Farm LLC conditional use permit subject to the conditions of approval. Second-
I have a motion and second, all those, Commissioner Mulder.
One to raise, I think.
Just voice vote. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. All right, thank you. And now we go to item four, U-Haul Building signage.
I don't need a staff report.
So, okay, we'll waive the staff report and-
I just have some questions and comments.
Sure.
In here, it says that the proposed signage would have been allowable under the original master sign plan, but is there any requirement that we have to fall back on that? I mean, we just passed a ordinance for signage. Everyone could go backwards and say, hey, it was eligible at the time, but-
I think the, the important distinction there is that the original, and the master sign plan says that, you know, sets out the kind of signs that would be permitted and it specifically states in there that those signs need to be approved by the landlord as well as the county authority. And so our interpretation of that has been that, that those signs need to meet the current code. So that, that's why this is coming forward as a conditional use permit.
So, so I want to just disclose, I live in McKinleville, not anywhere near this particular property. This wasn't the original inhabitant of these buildings. They used to be Kmart and, and a grocery store raised. You can't drive by, I've drive by that building, those two buildings several times a week and there's no way you don't know that that's U-Haul. I mean, it's all over the building. It's, there's vehicles all, you know, U-Haul, U-Haul, U-Haul. I mean, it's a huge U-Haul facility. I don't think we need to deviate from our existing ordinance and allow additional signage. I don't see the purpose. They, they make a reference to other facilities that have all these signs on them. Well, we have our own ordinance and we don't have to comply with what's going on in other parts of the California or the world. And so I, I'm opposed to changing or deviating from our existing ordinance that we just passed and spoke on for hours. So that's just my personal opinion. Everyone else might have a different-
Sure. Commissioner Mulder.
I thought through the sign ordinance, we did allow for people to come forward with the conditional use permit. So I feel that this is following that. So that's just my understanding at it, of it, but I don't drive by it and see it all the time either. So I haven't been to that part of McKinleville for at least six months, so.
Oh, I had the same feelings as Commissioner O'Neill because I live very close to this and the fact that there's about 60 vehicles parked in the parking lot also acts as signage. I, and I, and I very much support her in saying we should stick with the ordinance that we painstakingly passed. I, and maybe some, maybe the county can chime in, but I wasn't sure that I could find a way to deny it based on the ordinance that we have. So if, if there is a pathway forward that would help reduce the, just the sheer number, we've got eight new signs going in that are going to be huge. If there is a way to sort of tone it down a bit, I would be in support. I just wasn't able to figure that out on my own.
There, there certainly is a way to deny it. It is a conditional use permit. And so there are the specific findings that you need to make. The, probably the most important one there would be that it's not detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare. And the public welfare is a pretty all encompassing thing. So one of the things that we looked at in reviewing this was what we felt like the visual impact would be to the public. And I think it's noted in the staff report that we did work with them to reduce some of the signage, but certainly that is within the purview of the planning commission to make those findings, to either deny the project or to reduce some of the signage to something that you believe would not be detrimental to the public welfare.
I will note that I'm not a resident of McKinleville, but I do drive by there once in a while. I would say, I knew it was a U-Haul facility. I didn't know that it was a storage facility, that it had indoor storage. And I think that's what some of the signage is trying to reference. Also, when I was looking at the signage, I was struggling between, are these signs or murals? And I found myself going, well, our ordinance didn't really address like these murals or graphic arts that are kind of going on the side of the building, which do advertise or, or demonstrate to people what's going on in that building. But are they signs? Or are, so, you know, I was, I was kind of struggling with that one. I, I, I took some solace in that, well, it's quite a ways back from the street. And they are applying for a use permit and staff already did reduce some of the signage. And they provided the graphic visuals and, so that's where I kind of was on it.
I remember when we talked about signs because I said, you know, being an elder, it's kind of hard sometimes to see signs. And we went through this whole thing. Well, we live in day and age where you go on your phone and everything's on your phone now and you don't need all these big signs. and you don't need all these big signs. So if they want to know what's going on in there, which, you know, most of us have already figured it out, they have websites for that. They have, you know, MapQuest and all of that that lead you to their website that tells you what's going on in there. So, because that was an issue I had, like, you know, when we were, you know, shrinking the signs down, that, and I said, hey, what if you missed the sign when you drive by, and you guys said, look at your phone. That's what everybody does nowadays. So I just want to remind all of us that we don't, and these signs are orange, you know, so even though it's set off the road, you don't miss the orange U-Haul signs, or the hundred vehicles out front, or boxes, and, you know, it's pretty much taken over a huge part of the commercial property in McKinleyville.
Are we going to allow the applicant?
Oh, yeah.
I'd be ready to make a motion, so I just...
I have a couple more questions, and I think Commissioner Kurayazi does.
Can you, it's been a while since I've been up there as well. Can you remind me, there's also a very large sign existing already that serves that commercial plaza, right? So I'm assuming there's already space to advertise that there is storage. And in addition, I guess, thinking about that same question, Commissioners Scavdall, you brought up of whether or not these are covered under our, under the ordinance as signs. And I interpreted it that they do, but I recognize that just because they don't say a business name in lettering, I think they're, they very clearly communicate the business.
Couple more questions. Since we didn't, I didn't see any public comment on this, and I'm not referring in the room, but we didn't receive any letters. What notice, what notice did we provide to McKinleyville? Is it just within a certain distance of this building, or did we notify more broadly? I don't want to hear from some merchants association or something else that says they weren't informed about this. What?
Well, we did follow our standard notice procedure, so it was just property owners and occupants within 300 feet. And then it was posted in the paper as well.
Okay. Yes.
I guess I would, I mean, I think we can take the temperature of the room before going to vote. Obviously, Commissioner O'Neill and I would be in favor of, you know, discussing this more or toning it down a bit. The other option would be to kind of run this by the McKinleyville Chamber of Commerce, like, the businesses and kind of get their feedback as well. I just don't know. Obviously, Commissioner O'Neill and I don't feel like our options are fully exhausted here, but if the rest of the commission feels otherwise...
Well, before we go there, I would open the public hearing, and I don't know if the applicant's here or on the phone, or if there are any members of the public that would like to speak on this item. And you're representing?
Mountain Mike Pizza.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Well, thank you for your time. My wife and I, Lori, we are the owner of the real property of Mountain Mike. Previously, it used to be Denny's. As I agree with a couple of your folks, this whole parking bite you, they know it's U-Haul. And my question is, do they need consent of other property owners within that shopping center before they move on? Because basically, the reason we shut it down at Denny's, because shopping center died. And we looked at reciprocal easement agreement very in-depth with professionals that are obviously for use. They never intended to be used for U-Haul. Storage was some sort of, like a Kmart, Walmart, Lowe's. Then we discussed it with management of U-Haul. Finally, they stopped parking the car on their, this van by this school road, so have some visibility. So I think, I agree, they need consent of other property owners within the shopping center. But I'm not sure whether there are even, this is a building sign or additional monument sign, I'm not sure. And yes, I did receive their notice, thank you. But obviously, I didn't react to it. I said, I'm going to just come in. Johnny, I'm here, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the room that would like to address the commission on this matter? Or anybody on the phone? Indicate by star nine. I don't see any hands raised, so I will close the public hearing. Commissioner West?
Question for staff. Can staff address some of the questions that were brought up by the public commenter about how these signs impact? I think, for me, the most relevant question was, like, do, if, by approving the U-Haul signs, are we impeding other businesses in that shopping center's ability? Will the master sign agreement, will U-Haul take up most of what's allowed for signage? Is maybe the most succinct way to put that.
The answer, so no, they wouldn't. Basically, the issue is that these signs that are proposed would actually exceed what is allowed per frontage of a building under the sign ordinance without a conditional use permit. And so, they wouldn't be taking up anybody else's ability to comply with the sign ordinance. However, and those other property owners would also have the ability, if they wanted to exceed their signage allowed, to apply for a use permit as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kurayazi?
Just to clarify on Commissioner West's question, does that also apply to the master sign plan, or like, how does that, kind of going back to original question, what's the, how do they play together, I guess?
The master sign plan has some additional restrictions, and they do talk about, like, locations and things like that. The way that they relate together is that it very specifically says in the master sign plan that the local, that the signs have to be permitted by the local agency, the planning department essentially, or, sorry, the county. And so, our interpretation of that has been that as long as they meet the sign ordinance, that is approval. So some of those could be principally permitted. If they don't comply with the sign ordinance, our reading of the master sign plan is that it requires them to come and seek a special or conditional use permit.
I have one more thing to say. Could they not take the existing signs they have and work with complying, if they feel like the signs that they have don't give the message that they want to give, they could convert their existing signs within the ordinance to say whatever they need to say and still stay within the ordinance as it exists without adding additional signs, because they want to look like what the U-Haul building in Orange County or some other place looks like? Because that's what, when I looked at the pictures, you know, they were trying to put all of this stuff up there, so, you know, they could convert their existing signs and modify those if they don't feel that they tell the picture that they want to tell, you know, the community. But I'm, you know, we just heard from the, one of the only businesses that's still in that subdivision, the Rite Aid is closing down. The only thing that's left there now is McDonald's and Mountain Mike's. And how many acres is that of U-Haul? It's like seven acres or more of U-Haul, vehicles, boxes. You know, they have outdoor storage, they have indoor storage. They have signage everywhere. There is no way that you don't know that's U-Haul. I don't feel like they need to increase signage so that we look like Orange County or, you know, Santa Barbara or wherever. They, you know, I don't even know that they would let them do that. I think they need to stay within the sign ordinance, and if their signage don't tell the story they want to tell, then they need to modify their signs within our ordinance, and I don't think we should give them the pass, you know. I mean...
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's my motion. My motion is that we not approve it.
Excuse me, Director Ford.
Yeah, if I could, Chair, if it's the intent of the planning commission to do something other than following staff's recommendation, particularly if you want to deny this request, we would ask that you would continue this to a date certain and allow us to bring findings back to support that action.
Thank you. Because where I am personally on this is, I'm not comfortable making exceptions to our ordinance for two reasons. One, I think the community has entrusted us in, we had a lot of comments on the ordinance itself, and it, community has entrusted us to follow that ordinance. And if we're not, I would prefer to see broader circulation of the proposed changes to a broader part of the community. I'm not sure what that is in the business community of McKinleyville, but I think we should let them know that we're considering making an exception to the sign ordinance. And two, I'd like to hear from the applicant why they feel it's important to have this type of signage on their building, and I think they should be here if they're asking us to make an exception to their sign ordinance. I think they owe us respect and courtesy to be here to explain why we should be making such exception. So that's, so...
And if you haven't driven by there in a while, and you happen to be there by the time this comes back for discussion, you'll kind of get the picture, a better picture, I think, of what we're talking about.
Okay, so, excuse me, Commissioner Mulder.
So I just want to clarify, we're going to, are you withdrawing your motion, Commissioner O'Neill, and asking to bring it back on a date certain?
Based on the board's recommendation that we have to have, the description lots...
If I could offer a motion that I think captures what you were trying to do, is that you would adopt a motion of intent to deny this application and continue it to the meeting of... To September 4th, to allow staff to bring back findings and evidence associated with the denial of this application.
Yes. That's what I'm recommending.
I mean, if I may chime in, I'm not 100% sure that I want to deny it, but I'm persuaded that it's worthy of a longer conversation with notice to the applicant. So, but I guess if you need to have it teed up as a denial in order to continue it, then we can do that. I mean...
For clarity, we don't need to have it just be a denial. I mean, it can be the commission's discretion to continue this for additional discussion. We can be prepared to have resolutions the other way.
I mean, I'm persuaded that there's enough here that warrants discussion, including notice to the applicant and other affected neighbors, that we should have a fuller discussion.
Yeah, yeah. So, well, I'm not sure that we have a motion. We have an original motion. We have a proposed wording from Director Ford, and we have some discussion on that proposed wording. So let's start with this. Commissioner O'Neill, are you withdrawing or amending your original motion?
I will withdraw my original. I didn't really say much.
Right, okay.
Motion, and I will go with the recommendation. Does that have to be a motion?
Be a motion to continue to September 4th with direction to renotice this, and ask the applicant to be present, renoticing, I'm intending to capture Chair Scavdall's desire to see a broader community outreach.
And show some photographs. Like, when we did Mountain Mike's, we got to see what it was going to look like, you know, and so that you could all visualize.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner O'Neill.
I'll second.
We have a second. We're having discussion on the motion.
Just want to clarify, then, the motion is with intent for denial. Is that correct or incorrect? No?
No. It's a continuance.
Continuance, okay.
Requesting a broader notification and applicant participation or attendance to the meeting, or at least notice.
Thanks. If I could ask for maybe some clarification on what you mean by broader notification. I understand what you mean, but a distance...
I feel like the McKinleyville town is represented by certain organizations. I don't know their names, but, I mean, well, obviously, we have a whole town center plan coming up. We have other organizations. I feel like they should be informed of a decision potentially that we're going to make that's asking us to take exception to a sign ordinance.
So it wouldn't necessarily be an expanded distance, but to seek some of the...
Community representation from McKinleyville.
Could I, could I offer this? We will do a press release. We will put it into the, some of the McKinleyville blogs.
Thank you.
McKinleyville Community Watch, some of the other sites that are of general interest, and then we will also issue a press release notifying the public that the planning commission would really like to hear from the public on this.
That satisfies me. Thank you.
And I'll just add, most businesses are part of the McKinleyville Chamber, so directly reaching out to them could be helpful.
Thank you.
All right, we have motion, second, some clarification.
I think just a quick two cents. So I think for anybody who's watching this or who has commented, like, this would be an opportunity to come back and comment again if you so choose to, in a fuller discussion. And I also just want to note, I appreciate us continuing this. If we were to consider denial on a consent calendar item, it's, oftentimes, if it's on consent, the applicant assumes that there's a pretty good chance it's going to get passed. So I think giving more time and opportunity for the applicant to be present is appreciated.
All right. Can we have a voice vote, please? All those in favor, motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back. All right, please call me back to order, please. And we are going to move to item G, a workshop on a regional climate action plan. And this is a workshop. This is, this will be the first time the commission is taking up and hearing a presentation on the regional climate action plan. Purpose of the workshop is to help us get up to speed, answer some questions of the staff, but we will also take questions from the public. If there's anything you want to, public wants to point out to us. This matter will come back to us in a month or so. Not sure when.
Yeah, it will come back probably the first meeting in October.
Okay, so there'll be this workshop, then there'll be actual, it'll come back to us in October, hopefully at that time. Again, we'll have a public hearing, and we'll be making a decision as a commission to, hopefully, be ready to approve the climate action plan and recommend it to move forward to the Board of Supervisors, which will also have a hearing on this. So there'll be several opportunities for the public to engage on this climate action plan. But, so we'll get started tonight, turn it over to staff to make a presentation, and then get into some Q and A and public comment. Thank you. And Director Ford, just to be clear on our timeframe, what... And Director Ford, just to be clear on our timeframe, what time, we have to be out of here by?
Usually about 9:30.
Okay, and we have a couple other agenda items, so we're going to let this run till about 9:15 at the most. Okay? Just any comments from Director Ford or our own discussion?
Okay.
So let's, let's target 9:15.
I, I will gladly lend any time that I have to this discussion.
Okay, fair enough. You want us to get through it. I was just trying to honor my commitment to Mr. Mulder to end early. I was going to try to take five minutes at least.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Megan Acevedo, and I will be presenting the Humboldt Regional Climate Action Plan and the SEQA Greenhouse Gas Emissions Thresholds. The purpose of the workshop is to inform the planning commission and the public about the RCAP, its structure and targets, and the proposed SEQA greenhouse gas emissions thresholds, as well as to receive questions and comments on the RCAP and greenhouse gas emissions thresholds. As the plan is regional and will need to be adopted by several jurisdictions, the goal is to have one solitary plan for the region. This meeting will go over the RCAP background and purpose, the summary of greenhouse gas emissions analysis and reduction targets, the RCAP strategies, measures and actions, the implementation process, the proposed SEQA greenhouse gas emissions thresholds, and the status of the EIR and overview of major comments that have been received. Policy AQ P9 of the air quality element in the general plan called for a multi-jurisdictional climate action plan consistent with state legislation. As well, implementation measure AQ IM3 states that the RCAP would mitigate the impacts of the 2017 update to the general plan. The county began working on a climate action plan in 2019 with the seven incorporated cities and Redwood Coast Energy Authority, which later included collaboration with the Humboldt Transit Authority, the Humboldt County Association of Governments, and the Humboldt Waste Management Authority. The RCAP partners will be referred to as the Working Group throughout the presentation. The Working Group was essential in developing a regional climate action plan consistent with state legislation, and that meets the requirements of a SEQA-qualified greenhouse gas reduction plan, or otherwise referred to as a SEQA-qualified cap. What is a SEQA-qualified cap? A SEQA-qualified cap would include baseline greenhouse gas emissions inventory and forecasts. It guides the jurisdictions to achieve state targets by identified measures and actions, includes plan tracking and monitoring mechanisms, and has undergone environmental review pursuant to SEQA guidelines. In this case, would be the RCAP EIR. A SEQA-qualified cap would also allow SEQA streamlining for greenhouse gas emissions of future projects that require SEQA analysis, and allows SEQA tiering from the RCAP EIR for RCAP implementation projects. The plan is regional and requires the participation of the county and seven incorporated cities in order to achieve the goals for greenhouse gas reductions. Measures in the RCAP are applicable to existing and proposed development and government operations. While there may be future development proposed in future RCAP implementation projects, there is no development currently proposed with the plan. The overall purpose of the RCAP is to mitigate greenhouse gas emissions in Humboldt County from the general plan, and to reduce regional greenhouse gas emissions in line with state goals of achieving emissions 40% below 1990 levels by 2030, and 85% below 1990 levels, and reach carbon neutrality by 2045.
Excuse me, just a couple comments. One, I suspect this is going to be a fairly long presentation, going through a lot of different topics. So commissioners, I would encourage you, if you have questions, just ask them as we go along, so that we're not trying to go all the way back. And then second, on that last slide, can you just, again, clarify for me, these are state targets.
Correct.
That, and I assume we're obligated to develop a plan that meets these state targets. We can't set our own targets? Or are we just following the state targets as a?
We, we can make our own targets if they're below those targets, or more, more ambitious than those targets. Those are the minimum targets.
Okay. That, thanks, though, to my point. Thank you.
I'll, I'll add to that, too, that having a cap that is in line with state targets provides substantial evidence in order for it to be a qualified cap under SEQA.
That meets or exceeds state targets.
Correct.
Yes.
So if, at the 1990 levels for Humboldt County, or the 1990 levels for the state of California?
This will be for Humboldt County, the region, including the incorporated cities. So this is countywide.
But what I'm saying is, we have to go back, let's say we had really good numbers, you know, in 1990, or, you know, is it possible for us to get down to, to improve that much if we already had good numbers? Does that make sense?
It, it does. Now, that, creating the baseline was one of the things that was the big struggle here. And so we, we did, actually, the consultant did go back and used an accepted methodology to look at 2022 numbers and backcast to 1990. Part of the argument is that in 1990, there was a whole lot more industry out on the peninsula, and why can't we have that as part of our greenhouse gas emission reductions? And the fact of the matter is, is we can't, because we don't regulate the air emissions coming out of those.
We had a lot of logging trucks in 1990 that we don't have now either, so.
But, but again, we don't regulate the number of cars on the road or industry trucks on the road. So what we're doing is comparing the things that we do have the ability to regulate now, and looking at what those were in 1990, looking, and I'm getting ahead of Ms. Acevedo here, but looking at what we think it was in 1990 based upon the modeling, the accepted methodology for determining that. And then coming forward and looking at where we currently are and where we would go with business as usual. And I, I just want to be real clear on one other thing, is that part of the struggle that we've had, and this is the real, the reason that we had to kind of have a restart on this, is that there has to be substantial evidence to demonstrate that you can achieve, or that the county can achieve, the county as a whole in this case, can achieve what it says it's going to achieve. So just meeting the minimum state targets doesn't mean that we can just make numbers up. We have to be able to demonstrate that we can actually accomplish that. And, and, and so, you know, there may be a desire to go deeper, but we would need to demonstrate that we could do that, too. So it, this is thoroughly complicated. We're, we're going to try to walk through it in baby steps tonight, but there's a, there's a lot to consider here.
So there is a, maybe it's wrong to say this now, but I heard the director say, we don't regulate vehicles and the air pollution, but I, I was reading in the RCAP that we're having to factor that in. So the, but there has been a lot of argument, I've heard, testimony of logging trucks and the way the industry was going. There's a lot of people I've heard that don't want to come forward, you know, how much, have they looked at how much diesel was consumed in the county for all the off-road equipment? If we're factoring in off-road equipment here, have we looked out the amount of bored feet produced out of those mills, and then done the reverse math of how many bored feet go on a truck to, to get that carbon footprint? I just want to make sure that we've possibly looked at those things to, there's a lot of people that are saying the baseline number is too low, like our carbon footprint was much higher than we're acknowledging.
So I, I, to, to just, you know, reveal the big white elephant in the middle of the room. We don't believe for a minute that we contribute to the greenhouse gas emissions problem in the state, or the United States, or the world. We're fundamentally a carbon sink. And fundamentally, we also believe that the amount of greenhouse gas emissions now are really far less than they were in 1990. But the way that we're regulated by the state in terms of what we can capture as, in terms of baseline, and then what we have the ability to regulate, and all those things that you just identified, we don't have the ability to regulate. So we're only focusing on that, that we have the ability to regulate.
Gotcha.
To be abundantly clear for everyone, can you tell us what those things that we can regulate are beyond, obviously, county facilities, you know?
That, that's going to be part of the presentation when we walk through the things that we're trying to get quantitative reductions in.
Mr. West.
I just have a, might as well get it out of the way at the top before we get further into the staff report. I just need to share that I'm employed by the City of Eureka, who is a part of this plan. I haven't worked on or contributed to the RCAP as a document. I did oversee our communication staff and sharing the public noticing through the city communication channels, but I don't have any special knowledge or insight into the plans and policies, and I'm not a decision maker for the City of Eureka.
I guess I should add, through the LDR process, I was given this document via my employment with Caltrans as well.
Okay, all come clean.
Well, I, I'll jump in then to say that I am still on the Board of Directors of EPIC. EPIC co-wrote with a number of other organizations a couple of the crucial letters in our packet, but I was not a part of that discussion. I have not been part of any policy discussion with any of those groups about their views on this document, so. And I do have one other question to ask, but I don't want to, if I could, just, before we get into it, I, we've already sort of alluded to one of my central concerns with the approach that the RCAP takes, which is, was highlighted by the letter from Mr. White and Ms. Dodd, and Dr. Director Ford just kind of spoke to it. This, this, the framework, the state framework that we are fitting within, it only deals with emissions. It does not deal at all with the sequestration side of the carbon equation, because it does feel that that is the side of the equation, that our county could have a much bigger role in enhancing the ability to sequester rather than just cutting emissions.
So some of the, through the chair, some of the policies and objectives within the RCAP are to acquire funding and begin to find ways to study that.
Yes.
And, and so that we can be in a position for 2045, which is part of the strategy of carbon neutrality, is to take advantage of that carbon sequestration.
Okay. Yes, I guess there are, there are some references to that. I just, yeah, okay, thanks.
Clearly, I hijacked this presentation, but that's okay. Commissioner Curiezi has a question.
Well, actually, so I appreciate Commissioner West bringing this up. I should have done so earlier as well. So I also am a employee of Humboldt Transit Authority. I have been involved in the Working Group of the RCAP group that Ms. Acev, Acev, I apologize, Acevedo.
Acevedo.
Thank you. Acevedo was leading. I also was involved in previous efforts of this regional climate action plan, so I do have a fair amount of background on this. However, I don't see that presenting a conflict here, and that has been my understanding as well, but I think it's worth mentioning now that others are particularly mentioning their involvement at the city.
Thank you.
So I guess ex parte, I did, there was the very first meeting of this that was held on Zoom. My grandson and I participated from my forest that I manage, that I do sequester carbon at, so I might have a factor in this some way or another.
Looks like I'm the only one conflict-free. I'll make all the decisions on this. Oh, and Commissioner O'Neill. And that was a joke. I think everybody's disclosed, and we don't actually have any conflicts here, so. Thank you, Ms. Acevedo. Turn it back to you.
The RCAP includes a countywide greenhouse gas emissions inventory for the year 2022, which found that the region generated approximately 1.5 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent, and this is only for areas that local governments have jurisdictional control over. The primary contributors to local emissions were on-road transportation and building energy use from natural gas.
So I'm going to just reference a point of confusion when we talk about the fact that we aren't regulating logging trucks, and then we say on-road transportation is the biggest contributor, and you just said that these are things that we have control over. So could you, I, I need to understand that.
Yeah, I think based upon, sorry, I probably misconstrued the idea a little bit. Based upon the 2022 analysis, we backcast what that would be. And I think the, the question probably that is raised is, well, 1992, it was so far higher than, in, yeah, 1990 was so far higher than in 2022, that a backcast wouldn't have captured all that. But the struggle that we have is that we don't have a way to capture 1990. We didn't, we didn't model it at the time. We didn't test it at the time. So what we've done is followed state-accepted methodologies to go back and backcast to 1990 what the emissions were. And still, the, our biggest emissions factor is vehicles. Whether that's logging trucks, or just, you know, personal vehicles, or a combination of both, we get a lot of tourist vehicles through here, too.
Okay, so.
Can I ask a follow-up on that one? There's no way we were able to reach out to a large petroleum supplier and get their fuel consumption for 1990 if they would maybe be willing to release those records to get quantifiable evidence to show our fuel consumption?
So, I mean, we probably could, but would we capture all of it?
We wouldn't capture.
And then, then, we would have to capture it all for every different sector that we're looking at.
There's no, there's, yeah, to, to the point, I don't, I think we're trying to understand, but there's, there's always going to be some argument that our 1990 backcast is, was maybe too low. But there's always going to be also an argument that whatever methodology you tried to use to determine that number, that isn't from some standard methodology.
Right.
In other words, if we create our own methodology, that's going to be subject to challenge. I would understand that.
Right.
Furthermore, then, if we, if we created our own number, we would also, back to the 40% reduction goal, which we're adopting to meet the state, which is actually the minimum reduction that the state would allow, we, we'd set ourselves up for further challenge that the 40% reduction wasn't enough if we raised the 1990 effort, right? So I can see us just trying to massage that too much, so I think we have to, at some point, accept the data that we have.
And in fairness, one of the things the planning commission, if you're not already aware, that you will shortly become aware of, is that there is. is that there is a wide chasm between those who believe that the number's too low and those who believe the number's too high.
Correct.
And, and there's not a lot of people who are sitting in the middle saying, yeah, we're okay with that.
Of course, yeah. Not, that, that, that's kind of what's getting at, so, so, but what we're saying is, we've used a methodology that has become somewhat standardized across the state or that other agencies are using.
That the state has adopted.
Okay, thank you. Back to you.
With information provided in the twenty twenty-two greenhouse gas emissions inventory, a nineteen ninety backcast was generated for the region, along with emissions forecasts for two scenarios. A forecast was generated for business as usual scenario, and a forecast was generated to account greenhouse gas emissions reductions anticipated with the implementation of active state legislation. The graph provided shows the legislative adjusted scenario forecast for twenty thirty and twenty forty-five, separated out by sector. Greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets for twenty thirty and twenty forty-five were quantified using information from the nineteen ninety backcast and the legislative adjusted forecast. Details on the calculations and methodologies used for developing the greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets is included in Appendix B of the R cap, the greenhouse gas inventory forecast and targets report. Yeah, so the slide is showing the adjusted forecast here and our target goals in order to reach nineteen ninety emissions. So, you can see the twenty, twenty thirty targets here, um, is to have one point two, approximately one point two metric tons of CO2 equivalent emissions in twenty thirty, and, and zero emissions at twenty forty-five with, uh, including carbon sequestration for carbon neutrality.
And if I could just for a minute, the, the top line is just business as usual, that's without any legislative adjustment. So, it goes back to the previous slide. So, the second line there is with legislative adjustment. And so, and then in twenty thirty, it kind of shows that, uh, delta, the change between what we need to accomplish to get to twenty forty, twenty thirty's goal and then twenty forty-five's goal, and how much we need to compensate for. And then you can see in twenty forty-five, the delta becomes much, much larger. I, I, I'm sorry, maybe you understood that, but I think it's important to understand that there, like, is a growing disparity to get to twenty forty-five and be carbon neutral.
What if there's a new industry that shows up and says, hey, we want to build something in Humboldt County, and you go, can't have you because we won't be able to make our goal, like?
I, I, I don't know that that's necessarily true. So, this isn't intended to stop industry. It's intended to help the governments, the, uh, JPA's, joint power authorities within the county to work and do things that aim towards reducing the amount of greenhouse gases that are reduced or that are produced. And, and, and so, this is the, the blueprint to accomplish that. Then it also allows to evaluate under SEQA whether or not a project would comply with it. And, and so, it could be, and we're going to talk about this a little bit later, that one of the benefits of doing this is for SEQA streamlining. Whereas, if a project comes in and is completely consistent, then you don't have to do SEQA analysis on GHG. And, and so, there, there is a strong benefit and incentive here to have this, this done. This is not to discourage industry, it's not to discourage growth. It's really intended to guide, um, growth and guide how we make decisions about our existing facilities and when we go to upgrade those, what do we do to minimize the amount of greenhouse gases that are, that are emitted.
Who measures this data, how often, and where are we? Because we only have four and a half years left.
Right.
Twenty thirty, so, is there a line, is there, the, the line that's missing on this graph is where we are today. I don't know if we're on that target, targeted slope, or we're above it or we're below it.
Yeah, part of the struggle is that, you know, we're not going to be going out and measuring everybody's emissions. And when Ms. Asaveta gets deeper into the discussion, she's going to talk about, you know, the credit that is given, the quantification for reductions that are given for achieving certain things.
Okay. So, it's a accumulation of credits over time.
Correct.
Is how we're marching toward the goal.
Yeah, towards twenty thirty, and then twenty thirty, we're going to need to, um, for lack of a better adjective, retool.
Yeah, take inventory, see where we are.
Yep.
And adjust the slope of this line, uh, to twenty forty-five, depending on where we are.
Right.
Twenty thirty.
Part of the thing, and, and I know this is, we're taking a woolly path here, but part of the benefit of what's proposed is that it's really dependent upon constant feedback and constant adjustment. So, if something's not working, we're not getting something done, then we need to look elsewhere to accomplish the goals.
Okay, the R cap has been developed with twelve strategies for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, which describe an overall approach for reducing emissions within a given sector. Each strategy has specific measures that identify long-range policies to reduce emissions. Measures in the R cap were developed and refined by the working group. There are a few measures that were further identified as being applicable to urban or rural areas to acknowledge the different infrastructures available in urban versus rural areas of the county and incorporated cities, and the limitations, limitations of potential policies in rural areas. Measures in the R cap can be either quantitative, meaning that specific greenhouse gas emissions reductions have been calculated using substantial evidence, or they can be supportive, meaning that no specific greenhouse gas emission reduction targets are associated to, to the measure. Uh, supportive measures, while not quali- quantified, are still crucial to the overall success of the R cap as they provide support to the quantitative measures. Each measure contains several actions that identify specific programs, policies, funding pathways, and other specific commitments that will be implemented regionally. Urban areas have been defined using the U.S. Census Bureau's most current definition for urban areas, which includes contiguous block groups with at least five thousand people or two thousand housing units. The map here shows the areas that would qualify as urban, shown in blue, and all of, all other areas would be considered rural.
So, we did have some comments challenging, um, maybe in the earlier version, what the early, uh, urban areas were, but we've adjusted those to include some of the unincorporated areas, correct? Like McKinleyville and Cotton.
That, that is, that is correct.
Yes, thank you.
The following list shows the strategies that have been developed in the R cap and the specific sector that they apply to. Strategy one is to develop a regional climate committee. Strategy two is to increase carbon-free electricity. Strategy three is to decarbonize existing construction. Strategy four is to decarbonize new construction. Strategy five is to shift driving to walking and biking. Strategy six is to shift driving to public transportation or car share. Strategy seven is to shift land use to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Strategy eight is to increase zero emission vehicle adoption. Strategy nine is to reduce organic waste. Strategy ten is to conserve water and reduce wastewater emissions. Strategy eleven is to increase local carbon sequestration, and strategy twelve is to explore reduction in harmful refrigerant release. All strategies have measures and actions that are identified in detail in Table thirty-two of the R cap. And I'd like to clarify what I said earlier about, um, the sectors that were included in the inventory. Um, it's not just areas with, that are under local jurisdictional control, but that we also have influence over. Assembly Bill three oh six was recently passed, which places a moratorium on the adoption of certain residential building codes. While the staff report identified measures BE three urban and BE three rural to be affected by this bill, it has been identified that these measures would not be affected because they do not contain actions that propose building code changes. However, actions in Measure BE five may be affected by AB three oh six. It has been calculated that this accounts for less than one percent of the total greenhouse gas emissions reductions quantified in the R cap and would not significantly affect the ability to achieve the targets that are identified. This could be addressed through R cap monitoring and tracking and future updates made to the R cap measures and actions, as well, the adoption of SEQA greenhouse gas emissions thresholds would further support the region in reducing greenhouse gas emissions and achieving the R cap targets.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question? So, are you, in the staff report, you also marked BE, measures BE three. So, are you stating that those measures may not be impacted by this?
They should not be impacted because they don't propose any code changes.
Okay, thanks.
R cap implementation will be an iterative process involving the R cap working group and the regional climate committee. The regional climate committee will be responsible for tracking and monitoring the R cap implementation by providing progress reports and R cap updates once a year. Annual progress reports will be utilized to identify if the region is on track to meet its twenty thirty goals. If the measures and actions identified in the R cap for meeting the twenty thirty goals are not implemented, or if the annual progress report indicates that the region is off track from achieving the twenty thirty goal, the R cap will be updated to include additional actions or revised actions to meet the twenty thirty goal. Establishing the regional climate committee is essential to the success of the R cap as they will be responsible for the overall implementation and monitoring and tracking of the R cap's progress. There is high potential for the Humboldt County Association of Governments to take on this role. However, this is still being discussed within the organization and cannot be determined at this time. Now, I'm going to give an overview of SEQA environmental review as I will be discussing the EIR for the R cap and SEQA thresholds. So, what is environmental review under SEQA and why is it required? SEQA review is required to evaluate a project's environmental effects, identify where modifications can be made to reduce significant effects where feasible, requires public involvement and disclosure, and allows for informed decision-making when approving a project. When required by SEQA, this can be done through an environmental impact report, or EIR, that is prepared for a proposed project. An EIR is an informational document that discloses potential environmental effects of a project, identifies feasible mitigation measures to be included in the project, describes feasible alternatives to the proposed project, and requires certification by the lead agency for project approval. As the R cap is consistent with Section one five one eight, three point five B of SEQA guidelines, it will serve as a qualified cap and allows future development projects requiring SEQA analysis to streamline their greenhouse gas emissions analysis when they can show consistency with the R cap. Specifically, this means that projects that show consistency with the R cap do not need to provide separate SEQA greenhouse gas emissions analysis to determine the level of significance. Projects requiring SEQA that cannot show consistency with the R cap would need to provide detailed analysis of their greenhouse gas emissions impacts. This is when the proposed SEQA greenhouse gas emissions thresholds will be utilized to determine a proposed project's level of significance on greenhouse gas emissions. The proposed quantitative thresholds have been developed to establish urban and rural thresholds using guidance from the Association of Environmental Professionals. Efficiency thresholds are expressed as a per-person metric, for example, per, per resident, per employee, or per service population, and were calculated by dividing the allowable greenhouse gas emissions inventory for a selected year by the number of residents, full-time employees, or service population of that year. Proposed greenhouse gas emissions thresholds were decided on to keep the county and incorporated cities on track to meet twenty thirty and twenty forty-five targets and are shown in the table provided. If a plan or project's emissions do not exceed the applicable threshold, then it would be considered consistent with the R cap and to have a less-than-significant impact to greenhouse gas emissions. If a plan or project exceeds the applicable threshold, then mitigation measures would be needed to, uh, I'm sorry, would need to be identified and calculated to reduce the impact to at or below the applicable threshold. As the R cap is a SEQA-qualified cap, Section one five one eight, three point five A of SEQA guidelines allows future projects to, uh, implement the R cap to achieve its reduction goals to tier from its EIR. Future projects that tier from the broader EIR for the R cap would still require site-specific SEQA analysis and may require site-specific mitigation measures as it is not feasible to know all potential effects from future R cap implementation projects without knowing their specific locations. An EIR is being prepared for the R cap and SEQA greenhouse gas emissions thresholds to provide SEQA environmental review for the proposed plan and thresholds. This is required for the adoption of the R cap and SEQA thresholds. A draft EIR was prepared to analyze the potential impacts from the plan and SEQA thresholds and was released for forty-five day public review from February eighteenth to April fifth, twenty twenty-five. A total of five comment letters were received on the draft EIR. The EIR analyzed the following potential environmental impacts and found potentially significant and unavoidable impacts related to aesthetics, air quality, biological, agricultural, and forestry resources, cultural and tribal cultural resources, noise, and utilities and service systems. The major comments received on the draft EIR included concerns regarding allowance of tiering and streamlining and what that means, concerns that the SEQA streamlining checklist was not available for review, and concerns regarding biofuels included in the R cap greenhouse gas emission reduction measures. While the department is still working on finalizing the EIR for the R cap and SEQA greenhouse gas emissions thresholds, responses to comments is not available at this time. A full list of responses to comments on the draft EIR and not on the draft EIR but on the R cap will be made available with the final EIR and staff report. The final EIR will be brought back to the planning commission for final decision on the R cap and SEQA greenhouse gas emission thresholds at a later time. A SEQA greenhouse gas emissions streamlining checklist has been prepared and is available in the staff report. The checklist identifies measures that are applicable to new development projects, and it should be noted that it is an internal planning tool and not a policy document to be adopted. While we do not have a full list of responses to comments available today, we have provided the proposed changes to be made within the R cap document to adjust some of the comments that were received. The proposed changes include adding a definition for biofuel, biodiesel, and renewable diesel, correcting language regarding SEQA streamlining, update the urban areas map to reflect the current definition from the U.S. Census Bureau, correct language in Measure BE eight to address concerns from the Harbor District, and revise Measure T three to be urban, an urban measure and to identify infill areas as urban areas as the baseline connectivity. as the baseline connectivity score identified is not available countywide or completely established within the urban areas. And that is the end of my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. And do we have any questions for staff from the commission?
I'm just, was curious, one of the things on the list I saw was wildfires. Do you factor in wildfire emissions into your, your numbers?
That is not included in the inventory.
Commissioner Curie.
Would you be able to elaborate a bit on how the comment received around whether or not this may allow for streamlining? Or are you needing to wait to address that until later?
We can address that now. So there was two concerns there. One was relative to streamlining and what that means. So that really relates to projects that are coming in through the planning application process and are required to undergo environmental review. And as they go through environmental review, one of the questions on Appendix G, which is the initial study checklist basically for Sequo, is relative to GHG. So a project that is determined to be consistent with the R cap doesn't need to go through that entire analysis. That's the streamlining portion of it. It's just a streamlining, the environmental analysis relative to GHG. Everything else needs to be evaluated. It doesn't mean that you don't have to do the bioanalysis. It doesn't mean you don't have to do the hydrology analysis. It just means you don't have to do the GHG analysis. So then the other question was about tiering. And tiering is a concept in Sequo that when you do a program-level EIR, which this is, that you can use that EIR to capture the broad range of potential environmental effects. It's conceivable that that could be used to address all environmental effects if there's no new effects that have been identified. The, the catch there is that you really have to go through an analysis of what the potential environmental effects are to determine whether or not the EIR truly evaluated those. That's why Ms. Acevedo mentioned that, you know, it's nearly impossible at this point to understand what the potential projects are and where they would be and what the circumstances there are and evaluate all of that in a program EIR. But it is foreseeable that if somebody were to put, and this is one of the examples you, so I'll just use it, is to put a solar array along Highway 101, which is eligible to be a scenic highway. The general plan calls for it to be treated as a scenic highway. That that could be deemed an aesthetic significant adverse impact. So the EIR for the R cap calls that out, says, hey, this could happen. Whether or not the county would want to approve that there or not is a completely different issue. But that would not address the fact that perhaps that particular piece of property is like down in the bottoms, is all wetland, has, you know, special status species there. The, the program-level EIR of the R cap does not address all that. So a completely separate environmental determination would need to be made. The only thing that the R cap program, the EIR, could be used for in that case would be, wow, we addressed the potential effects of placing such a facility along a scenic highway. But everything else would still need to be addressed. It's unlikely that the program EIR would adequately address all impacts associated with all implementation measures within the R cap.
Thank you. I think, I guess I imagine that it would tier in the sense of the greenhouse gas analysis portion of assessing the impacts of a project. But in the same way that a, a general plan doesn't conceive every single possible project that could happen under it. So, but, so could it, is it correct to think about, apply the concept of tiering to just one, just the greenhouse gas portion of an environmental assessment?
That is where I would use the term screening. And, and then tiering is really about projects that are related to implementation of the R cap. Only things that are envisioned by the R cap. So one of the concerns that was brought up is what if somebody wants to come in and put in an industrial project? Can you use the R cap as the program-level EIR and tier off that? The answer is no, because that industrial project unrelated to the implementation of the R cap is, is not related to what the R cap or the EIR for the R cap considered.
So as we approve all these different plans, shouldn't we be incorporating a lot more measures into those plans that would help us? Like when we, when we approve an apartment building and, and yeah, we may not put all the parking spots in there, but we don't require them to put solar, as much solar or electrical plugins for renew, you know, electric cars and some of these smaller things that we could do. I mean, even when we, in cannabis, when we don't want generators, we get a lot of pushback. So shouldn't we just have sort of a laundry list of things we should start incorporating into our plans as we approve them?
I, I think if you look in the R cap, there is that list of things to start to do. You'll notice that there are ordinances to begin to adopt, to address some of those things. There's, and, you know, there's, there's programs to begin to implement like electrification or putting charging stations in so that people can have confidence in if they buy an electric car, that they're not going to be stuck someplace without the ability to charge.
I mean, if you look at the states, they know we're going to go all electric cars. I don't know if that's true, but we're going to have to have a whole lot more plugins for people to charge their electric cars. And that should be incorporated in every business that we approve or every apartment building that we approve, multifamily units. Emission, wood stoves, I would imagine, are huge, a huge problem. You know, we don't have as many maybe as we used to have, but even, you know, the, the type of wood stove that you can put into a home.
I, I think, yes, you're right. And that's what the R cap is seeking to do, is...
I'm just thinking of the things that we've approved so far since I've been on here, and it hasn't seemed like it's been a priority.
It's an increasing priority when we do environmental review, particularly evaluating GHG emissions. We're increasingly seeing the kinds of mitigation measures that are some of the action items within the R cap in order to achieve a less significant or a reduced environmental effect. The benefit of, of a program like this is that when we put those things in place and the project comes in as consistent with it, it doesn't have to redo that analysis. So it's just the expectation that those things will be done.
And the other thing is transit, you know. In some areas, it's still impossible to have transit in order to maintain employment or go to, you know. We did have transit in Blue Lake, and then it was removed, you know. So as we say, well, we want people to walk and ride their bike. We live in an environment where it rains a lot. And so if you have public transit, it's going to have to be in the evening. It's going to have to be in a lot more places. So those things all cost money and, you know.
Well, if, if, so part of the, the struggle with that is that in order to make transit more viable, we've got to rethink how we do land use. And that's part of what the R cap is looking at, is really incentivizing and looking at infill development, looking at development around transit stops, creating high-quality, high-volume transit stops so that then there is the ability to incentivize taking transit. And, and so that is something that the R cap would start to nudge us towards, absolutely. You're going to see the McKinleyville Community Town Center coming before you soon. And, and that's one of the things that's embedded within that.
I noticed that, and I know your presentation had to fly at a fairly high level. And you hit the 12 measures, but you didn't dive into the details underneath of the 12 measures, which is, I think...
We can, we can absolutely do that if, if that's the...
I don't know that we need to, but I wouldn't mind if you put that slide back up because I, I did feel that the wording that you presented to us on the 12 measures, some of it appeared a little black and white, whereas others appeared more evaluate and move towards, where if somebody might be reading the, the transit one thinking that we're not going to be able to drive cars anymore, that we're all going to walk and take the bus. And I don't think that's exactly what the measures are doing.
Correct.
So shift driving to walking and biking. Now, you know, again, it's a matter of how you, I have the word shift, but some people are going to think, oh, we're going to walk and bike. So, and, so for the other commissioner, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a list of strategies in the document for each one of them, each, each one of these strategies that moves us, moves us in a direction.
I'm just representing a district that's very rural, and backfilling doesn't necessarily work when you don't have transit to get to the areas you need to go to.
If I could, through the chair.
Yes.
When we worked on the original cap, that was one of the, the huge concerns, is that it didn't take into account the very rural parts of Humboldt County. And so that was one of the significant objectives when we had to kind of retool, restart, was to really recognize what's feasible in a very rural environment and, and, and then the things that are feasible in an urban environment. And that's why there is a distinction between some of the policies. Like, I believe it's T3, and we can go and look at that, really is a policy for an, for the urban environment, not for the rural environment. Because it's, it's feasible. Infill's feasible in the urban area. But it, I mean, what's infill in a very rural area? Infill out, you know, in Wichita, or, what's that?
Or Hoopa.
Or Hoopa. You know, what, what would that even be?
Well, and then people don't have the financial incentives. If you said, well, we want to have everybody have energy-efficient wood stoves, that, those cost money. And unless there's some, you know, they're already taking away a lot of the federal incentives to, to go to solar or renewable. So how do we get there? So if you set all these goals and then we can't financially get there because we can't expand our transit, because they cut back on federal transit programs, or they, you know, aren't giving the incentives, then what is the county going to do to, to get people other than make the cost of everything more expensive that people can't afford right now?
But I understand what you're saying. And I think that's one of the geniuses of this particular regional approach is because it allows the region to look at, say, critical transportation routes or critical bus routes and, and really begin to focus on development of not only the system, but the land use around that and, and to establish really transportation nodes. And I may be saying, you know, this may be too much of a dreamy kind of statement, but one of the unexpected outcomes that happened in the Bay Area with the Bay Area Rapid Transit, and I'm not talking about heavy rail here for Humboldt County, but is that they were developing those stations to be places where people would drive to and park. And that's what they voted for, to tax themselves on. But what ended up happening is those became high-density nodes around that transit station. So that there are things going on there. And if we were to think on a much different scale for Humboldt County, using the transit system, we've got to start to think about where should we be creating nodes and concentrating places for people to be, getting back to a human scale. You know, we then can encourage the public transit, the walkability, the ability for people to ride their bikes, acknowledging that we've got a lot of rain. But those are the ideas that are embedded within this.
You can see that happening now in Sonoma County on the smart rail corridor. So, and I know I need to take public comment, I guess, at some point here, but when you come back to us in October, are you going to be asking us to... We're going to be making a recommendation to approve this R, the R cap and the Sequo document?
Yes.
Okay.
And we will give you time to be looking at the Sequo document. And, I mean, you should have that available, the draft you should have available to you already.
Yeah.
The comments you should have available to you already.
And we can kind of see where you headed.
Yep.
You told us where you headed on some of those.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I, I mean, I, we wanted to have it ready for this meeting, but we just couldn't get there. But, I, I mean, tonight, it'd probably be good to take public comment. And then if there's some time, we can go through the table of the measures and kind of look at those and talk about those individually.
And when you talk about these measures, you've already, just, and I'm probably repeating what people already know, but I just want to say this, you've already taken all of this information and these measures to the city councils around the county, right, and to all these other, other groups and agencies. So they've all already had their bite at the apple, if you will, in terms of weighing in on the measures and their comments. And things have all been heard and adopted and incorporated, or at least considered in the plan.
I think that's a fair way to put it, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I think Commissioner Mulder's been waiting. I'll just go right down the row, if that's okay.
So I just want to thank staff for taking that approach of the rural versus urban. I did read some public comments that I read as it seemed like some were unhappy that the staff is taking that approach. Maybe I misread those comments, but I do appreciate that. I do travel 57 miles, so for me to bike here, seven hours and six minutes, according to Google Maps. So just want to point that out. Well, and I also appreciate your comments, Commissioner O'Neil, because the way some of those comments can be read and was expressed concern towards me is some people, it, it is read as, you know, that fear of cars being taken away might be some people's directive. So having that concern up, if you live in a rural community, is good to have. And I, I think you and I get similar comments for, you know, being in the rural areas. I don't know how far it is to Hoopa as far as biking, but there's, there's some steep hills. So that would be a rough bike ride into...
An hour drive.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, to be able to equally voice your opinion at a, at a table, a governmental table. So I appreciate you taking in everyone's consideration when drafting this document.
Commissioner McFarlane, please.
Three relatively quick questions. So first of all, the way the measures are presented, the first couple definitely read like there's a priority order. Is that a consistent trend throughout, or is that just a coincidence for the first two?
The rest don't indicate.
The rest don't indicate the, the county's priority or preference.
The table does show the phases, so certain actions within a measure is anticipated to be implemented at a certain phase. So I think like phase one would be the priority measures or actions in a measure.
Okay. But it, but all, if grant funding or something for a later phase was to come up sooner, then that would be okay, right? It doesn't have to go through phase one. Okay. And then just two more. So there's a, how close are we to 90% renewable energy by 2030? That's four, five years? I mean, this just seems like a really big number, high goal.
I just asked today, I think we're.
Chair, can you ask her to?
Is this on? Okay, great. Hi, I'm Faith Carlson from Redwood Coast Energy Authority Regulatory and Legislative Policy Manager. So I did actually ask this today in another conversation. We are, I, we're over the minimum. I think it's 42% is what we're at, but don't quote me on that. So the minimum threshold for this year is at one number, and then we're a little bit above the state target currently.
So 90% by 2030 seems achievable?
Yes, yeah.
Wow. Okay. And then my last comment was about for measure four, it talks about decarbonization of new construction for residential construction, decarbonizing it 95% by 2027. And so I'm just wondering if, it looks like some thought has been given, but kind of what thought has been put into the costs that this is, basically, we're in a housing shortage as it is now. And so this is obviously going to increase the cost, you know, if houses have to be built with panels and et cetera. So are we working on like some, I don't know, some sort of program to help defray some of those costs or?
Yes, we would, through the RCC, work on incentives to do that. But the current building code already requires a lot of that.
Okay.
You've, you've already got to put solar panels on there. There's a certain percentage of the power that has to be from renewable electricity. Already you have to demonstrate that gas is more efficient than like a heat pump. So tho- those things are already there. There's already a built in incentive that if you want to go with gas, you're going to have to jump, it sounds like an awful metaphor, but you're going to have to do a number of things to demonstrate that it's appropriately placed.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my, my only concern is that, you know, we see a lot of people coming up for these sidewalk exemptions and the argument is it's, it's a burden, it's a cost, it's too expensive to do this. And then so we say, okay, you don't have to, and they get their permit. And so I just want to, just trying to gauge if we're going to be in that situation again or if.
Our, our housing struggle is, 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 is cost related, but it's also related to the fact that we have 0% or less growth in our overall, this is going to be unpopular for me to say, but our overall wage scale doesn't support the cost of building a house.
Yeah, I think to, to that housing, housing cost point, I don't think it's clear that this would necessarily increase costs and solar panels reduce electricity bills. There can be savings over time, both at the initial construction phase as well as ongoing operations for not using natural gas. I don't think we can blatantly say that there are cost increases here. To appreciate RCA being here. Sorry, she's right behind you. I also wanted to point out that actually when the greenhouse gas inventory was done for this analysis, which focused on 2022, RCA's pro, emissions profile was substantially lower. I think they were, it was, your, your emissions profile per kilowatt hour was substantially lower than the minimum requirement. So I think that there was like a, because we were, we hit a drought in the high dependence of hydroelectric on some of the renewable portfolio, it drove the emissions back up a bit, but I just wanted to add that in. I also agree that it seems like it's feasible. Also background, I've been on the community advisory committee for RCA as well, so I kind of follow stuff that they do. I also want to be a little bit cautious about sort of making statements such as forcing people to bike on, on highways. That would be extremely unsafe. I think, feel like that's a bit inflammatory, so I would like to, that it doesn't really seem like we need to claim that, that there's a potential here. But I definitely appreciate voicing the concern. I did have one other question that I think was a consistent public comment that I've seen over the last year around potential inconsistency in veh- and vehicle miles traveled reduction targets, inconsistency with the regional transportation plan as well as the carb scoping plan. And I was curious if staff would be able to sort of speak to some of those concerns.
The targets that are identified in the R cap are to be achievable, so we, we had to make sure that we could provide substantial evidence that we could get there in order for the cap to be a qualified cap. So, yeah, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, John?
The struggle is that the, as Ms. Asveto said, we've got to be able to provide substantial evidence that that can be achieved. So the regional transportation plan, the state plan, those all are aspirational. They have less restriction on whether or not they actually can be achieved. The, the regional transportation plan in Humboldt County has been very effective at being able to generate funds to accomplish it, but the funds aren't tied to actually needing to accomplish certain goals. The funds are tied to doing certain projects. We can't do that in the R cap and have it a qualified cap. We have to be able to say, we believe we're going to do this, monitor that and be able to demonstrate that we're doing that. And so, yes, they are a little bit lower, but they're lower by design so that we can have a qualified cap and not be trying to achieve something that we can't achieve. That puts us in a liability position in terms of the cap being able to be qualified. I hope that helps.
I, I think maybe my confusion is that there is a full EIR covering both the regional transportation plan and the carb scoping plan. And so where in the SEQA process, is there a different requirement for this?
That those, I do not believe had to demonstrate that those could be achieved. They're aspirational.
So it, so there's a particular section in SEQA that, I guess, what's different about the R cap versus?
The R cap has to be able to demonstrate with substantial evidence that the goal that we're proposing can be achieved.
I guess what's different by, in, in, from, looking at it from SEQA, what's the difference between this particular plan and the regional transportation plan in what, why, why are those two plans seen differently by SEQA?
Because the regional transportation plan doesn't need to demonstrate that it's going to accomplish what it seeks to accomplish.
If I could through the chair, a SEQA qualified cap, it is actually specifically identified in section 1518.5 of SEQA guidelines. And so it's very specific to a greenhouse gas emissions reduction plan. So I don't believe there are any requirements in SEQA that are related to a transportation plan.
Commissioner Mulder, and then I'm going to take public comment.
So I apologize for going here, but inflammatory is not a word that we should be utilizing in our, all of our rules. And when you say how someone's words are perceived and make another feel, that isn't implying. So I'd really request not using inflammatory or any type of accusatory language like that. It's how someone was felt when that was brought to me.
Okay, thank you. We'll take public comment. I'll start in the room. Thank you. And then I do see I have a hand raised online too, so I'll get to you online after we take comments in the room. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. And as a reminder, Faith Carlson, Regulatory and Legislative Policy Manager with Redwood Coast Energy Authority. So staff at RCA have been very thankful to collaborate with staff at the county and other partners on the R cap. I would like to make a correction on one portion of the R cap. The R cap does make mention of a former RCA target of 100% local and renewable by 2030 and related goals to export power from the county. We currently are expecting to close this year at 100% clean and renewable. And we did, however, have to amend that language related to 100% renewable and local by 2030 at a recent board meeting. That language was changed to RCA will strive to develop local renewable energy resources and advocate for transmission capacity to deliver these resources to the rest of the state where they exceed local need. I want to say that due to how GHG emissions are calculated for the energy sector, this change does not affect any emissions targets for the R cap or any measures in the R cap. This change is due to a few existing and emerging challenges in the energy sector, which include existing non-local contracts, like a contract we have in Kern County that you may have heard of called Sandrini Solar, failed or delayed local projects like the, a terrestrial wind project, as well as potential delays to offshore wind due to current federal policy, some transmission constraints that we have locally that make it difficult to interconnect local resources or develop resources in an economic manner, low local developer interest, and with many of those factors leading to a higher cost for a smaller resource scale. So we look forward to continuing to work with staff on issuing those corrections in the final R cap. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
My name is Angie Dodd. I'd like, ever thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm sorry, I'm reading and I will try not to read too fast, but I only have three minutes. A couple of things I wanted to say just in response to the things that were said tonight and just really thank staff for all the work they've done on this. This has been a multi-year process. I've gone through the documents in a lot of detail. I haven't read the revised R cap, but I just want to point out that staff has really considered rural, urban situations. The measures aren't truly erroneous, or sorry, they're not truly difficult to implement. There's a lot of flexibility considered in these measures. So as you're, if you have the ability to read through them, you'll see that their, staff has really put a lot of consideration into the implementation and flexibility in these measures in both rural and urban areas. A lot of the measures focus on mandates that are already in place. So it's things we already have to do, like so, solar, everything associated with the building code. So I just wanted to point that out, that staff has made those considerations. My comments tonight are mostly focused on thresholds and thresholds that are reasonable to our county. Setting thresholds and policy need to be thought out carefully so that we are not painting our, painting our county into a corner and making development and economic stability more difficult. I suggest we keep things in context and not adopt extreme thresholds that are outside the magnitude actual, actual impact our county contributes to climate change. Humboldt County's overall contribution to CO2 is only 0.4% of the state's contribution. The smallest 25 counties in our state, which includes Humboldt County, only contribute 3% of the overall contribution. Our county is setting the stage for rural counties. We're the first one adopting a full R cap and thresholds. Okay, I already said. Humboldt is a carbon sink, which we've already discussed tonight, carbon negative and is thus already beyond carbon neutral. I see, I suggest that we take some credit for this when developing and adopting thresholds. The report on how the SEQA thresholds were determined was not provided until this workshop. So this is the first time the public has had the opportunity to review it and comment on how those thresholds were determined. There is, the detail in that report, it's a little difficult to determine how those, the actual emissions that they call allowable emissions were determined. And what I could glean though, they seem reasonable, it appears reasonable in magnitude. But it's difficult to ascertain how they allocated them between urban and rural categories. It seemed like rural got higher, and I'm not sure why, when it's less densely developed in the rural areas. The allowable emissions were used to estimate the county per, per capita thresholds, oops, sorry, I'm going to go a little over. They were calculated using the per capita and they were divided by two for some reason, just because we were compared to urban areas, which tend to be a lot lower. Urban areas like San, Santa Barbara County, which has a density of 255 per capita per square mile, Humboldt County is 38. So we would be six times Santa Barbara County. So for example, a residential threshold was, was eight CO2 per capita. We divided it in half and now we're four, which seems extreme for our county when those numbers were based on our county data. I'm wondering why we are setting such severe thresholds. Our county, it has, sorry, let me read this. Because we were compared to the urban thresholds, Humboldt thresholds were adjusted down 15% making them more severe. This is, the argument was made that is more in line with the urban thresholds and it's easier to achieve carbon neutrality. However, we are already beyond carbon neutral, so the adjustment doesn't make sense. Why are we being so severe when we are already know that we are in a good situation and we don't contribute a lot to climate change? Regions with higher contribution to emissions should bear the greater responsibility, I'm almost done, ensuring a fair and equitable approach to climate change mitigation. This should also be applied to rural areas across the state which have much lesser contributions as well as depressed economic capacity. Those jurisdictions across the state that have greater economic capabilities as well as a far greater contribution should take the lead while not penalizing places like Humboldt County. What is the justifiable reason to adopt more severe thresholds? And I want you to consider this when you're also thinking of adopting VMT thresholds.
I need you to wrap up.
Yeah, in a rural county that is already struggling, please review our submitted, submitted comments and consider this when adopting thresholds and policy. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have your written comments.
My name is Praj White.
Promise me you'll stick to three minutes.
I'll, I'll do the best I can here.
All right.
Wanted to, just wanted to make a couple of comments that I heard you guys talking about this evening, and I wanted to make a few comments on the compliance checklist. On the greater picture, talking about carbon sequestration and that that's something we want to figure out and get to later, I am abreast of information that there are many landowners already making carbon deals across the county. The, most of the larger properties are already entering into these agreements and there are small properties starting to aggregate together to sell these carbon credits. And so I want to emphasize that waiting might mean that we're like giving our water away, giving our trees away and giving our carbon away rather than getting the benefit here. I wanted to just reiterate that the accomplishing this program really is, counts on having carbon neutral electricity for everybody and that I am a fan of HCOG becoming the entity that would manage this. And I want to emphasize that in HCOG, city engineers and public works professionals help make recommendations for implementations and priorities of road products. And I would think that, or road projects, I would think that for the R cap, if the HCOG, which represents everybody correctly, should have a technical advisory for folks who know how to implement electrification through the community. Really, I'll try to go quick in a minute and a half, but really, you know, what we're here talking about today is an entire program, an EIR, very complicated. In the end, it's presented to us in a little checklist that helps projects get screened, whether they need to do an EIR or not. And I just wanted to touch in that, as we probably, you guys probably know, an EIR takes, can take years, it can be very expensive. So given the allocation of time, I wanted to just hit a couple items first. A lot of these measures talk about CEQA compliance, and that maybe they would be implemented on a CEQA checklist, but I feel like a lot of the requirements would be for a housing project that might be principally permitted, or a small development. And I can't quite tell, this says it's for projects under CEQA review, but it feels like things like committing to gray water opportunities to reduce water use are very focused on a building permit and a plumbing code, not a CEQA process. So I'm just interested in running through that. And on the use of my three minutes, I will leave it at that. But I do believe that reviewing this checklist and making sure that it's very clear is important to me as people come forward and look for advice on how to get through it. My last comment, I'm going to go a couple seconds over, is that in the draft EIR, there were good examples of projects, and it showed us how that we would meet the checklist and how we could be exempt from having to do an EIR for a normal project. I was hoping that staff could bring back to you guys to review for urban and rural circumstances of mixed-use, commercial, and residential projects, how they would qualify in that. And then, just to give us a good example, what if a project doesn't get exempt from the checklist? Could we see what an example of, it's called a project-specific analysis of greenhouse GGG emissions, including quantification of existing and projected GHG emissions compared to Humboldt CEQA GHG emissions thresholds, and incorporate ECAP, RCAP measures? Anyways, it's right in the front of this document, and it would be really good to see if we're setting a checklist up for what we qualify to be exempt from having to spend a bunch of extra money to get a project done. Which kind of projects check through that and are exempt from that? And how does it look if we actually had to do an analysis project specific, to give you guys an idea of what your choices will create on the implementation and development in our county? Thank you guys for your time, and I appreciate all of your service.
Thank you. And I acknowledge I let the first speaker go long, so I felt like I already let that horse out of the barn, so. But there aren't a lot of speakers tonight.
Providing equality, good job.
Yeah. So let's see, I have, I see no more speakers in the room, so Mr. Fisk, if you could unmute your phone, you, and let's test, make sure we can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. So, thank you.
Great. Good evening. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP. We will have more comments, I suspect, once the final EIR is released, but today, I just want to raise two issues pertaining to one of the changes that was made to the RCAP, as well as the newly released compliance checklist for CEQA greenhouse gas streamlining. So the checklist requires that a project be consistent with the current general plan zoning classifications to be eligible for streamlining. And that might seem straightforward, but it's complicated by the fact that the RCAP calls for a number of changes to general plans and zoning codes. And if it takes some time to implement those changes, which I think we can expect that it will, projects that happen sooner may actually need to include amendments or rezones, variances, or exceptions in order to be consistent with the RCAP. So requiring them to be consistent with, you know, current zoning or current general plan might create a catch-22. So we would request that you consider making projects that require those types of changes eligible for the streamlining, as long as they are consistent with the RCAP itself. Second, the RCAP, as you heard, was amended so that the only measure that addresses land use issues like infill and transit-oriented development, which is Measure T3, now applies only to urbanized areas instead of to the region as a whole. And again, you know, that might seem reasonable at first, because infill and transit-oriented development can, by definition, only really happen in urban areas. But the practical implications, I think, are opposite from the intention. Because if you make it apply only to urbanized areas, that means that on the checklist, you know, a project in a rural area can simply check not applicable to the one question in the checklist that pertains to land use, and then still be eligible for streamlining, which means that basically, projects that are associated with high vehicle miles traveled, high emissions from transportation, could still, in effect, be allowed to streamline their CEQA analysis as if they were low emission. So obviously, there is some need for housing and other development projects in more rural parts of the county, but generally, those high vehicle miles traveled, high, you know, transportation emission projects can't be considered to be consistent with the RCAP and be eligible for streamlining. So, and I think, based on my correspondence with staff, I don't think that exempting those projects from those standards was even staff's intent. So I'm hoping this is a relatively easy fix, but we can return Measure T3 to apply countywide, rather than making a checkbox just for urban projects. So in short, we would ask you to do that, as well as to allow projects to make changes to the general plan and zoning rules, as long as they are consistent with the RCAP. And I think that would improve implementation significantly. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't hear their comments from the public. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the commission and the workshop.
I have a question. What happens if you don't meet your goals?
So there's, there's not really a enforcement, you know, agency that is waiting to penalize the county or the region for not achieving the goals. But if you're not achieving the goals, and you're trying to use streamlining or tiering, you're subject to being challenged. And, and so, that, that's kind of the enforcement mechanism of it. The good news is, at the same time, if you're not meeting your goals, and this is why we've said, you know, trying to emphasize this, that the RCAP is really intended to be something that gets regularly reviewed, and if something's not happening and needs to be changed, the regular review allows for that to be changed, to really achieve those goals in a more efficient, more effective way.
Meaning you would, you could turn up dials, or, you know, or, or even bring in new measures?
Correct. Either tweak what you're doing, or do something differently.
I, I think, I also suspect if we're not, if we're not meeting our goals because we're not trying to meet our goals, you would be potentially losing some potential funding for certain projects and activities you would be pursuing. A lot of these majors are going to be somewhat contingent on achieving financing and funding from outside sources to, to achieve, to make progress, right?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I have a pretty straightforward question, and Ms. Acevedo, I apologize if you did make some reference to this in your initial presentation, but I know that you haven't produced the document, I guess, that, that shows all the responses to comments as of this time. I just, there was a line on page 13 of the staff report that says, "All proposed changes to be made to the RCAP in response to comments are shown in underlined and strike-through text in Attachment 1A." But, and we have that attachment. I just didn't see changes, but it's a long document, and maybe they're just sprinkled in a few places. I just want to check if that is in fact the case, that there are changes in that.
There are changes, yes. When turning the Word document into a PDF, those changes were lost. And so, there was an email sent out, I believe you should have received an email, that there are new documents available on Legistar that do show the track changes.
Thank you. Okay, so it's just not in the PDF, but it's in the Word version, or?
Well, it's a PDF now, but it's on Legistar.
It's a PDF now, got it. That shows, okay. I, thank you.
I'm just checking, I see people holding their button, but other questions? Commissioner Mulder? Oh, Commissioner West, thank you. I'm looking the wrong direction. It's hard, this time, me bigger than you.
I have a question for staff about the public comment regarding the Regional Climate Committee. I thought they had a good point, that it's not fully clear to me how each jurisdiction is appointing their representatives to the committee. And I was curious what staff thought about the suggestion that it be housed under HCOG and use the sort of already, the governing body of HCOG that's in place, that has voter representation as the committee.
Well, one of the benefits of HCOG is that there's already elected officials that sit on HCOG. So as the RCC, or the Regional Climate Committee overseeing that, that same body would include elected representatives that already serve on HCOG. As I think has already been mentioned, there's already a TAC, a Technical Advisory Committee with HCOG. It wouldn't be that difficult to see either a separate TAC or the existing TAC embellished to address issues related to the Regional Climate Action Plan. A lot of the issues that are trying to be addressed are transportation-related, which is right in the wheelhouse of HCOG. So we're hopeful that that works, and are thankful that HCOG has been working on that. We're very thankful that even there's a representative of HCOG on the Zoom link right now.
One of the things with HCOG is they don't have a very strong tribal representation, because they're represented the local governments. So I think that that needs to be taken into, I know the Yoroc tribe is, you know, has done a lot with carbon credits, and, you know, always including renewables in our grant. And maybe things have changed, but when I went to HCOG, it was not as.
I'm led to understand they do have tribal representation.
Maybe now, they do. But when I went, they didn't. Maybe they pushed their way in finally.
So I think just to follow up, or I'm looking at is Measure C1 on page 31 of the RCAP. And to me, it doesn't quite read that HCOG is the intended, am I missing something somewhere?
No, it was left intentionally vague, and, but, and to implement that, that's been a discussion that has kind of been evolving, even to the point where we have gone, and appeared before, HCOG, to ask if they wanted to, they directed staff to investigate that. Staff has been working to see what it would reasonably take, HCOG staff here, what it would reasonably take from a financial standpoint to make it work, what they would need from the other involved jurisdictions and agencies to make that work. So the, the leadership at HCOG is exploring that, and really looking at if it's going to go there to make sure that they can fulfill that function, and know what, what the real cost and commitment's going to be.
So is, my understanding is that the language is left intentionally, like that staff would like to go that direction, but the language is intentionally vague to leave, to leave options open in case HCOG cannot take on that responsibility?
Correct. I, I mean, one of the geniuses of the consultants who came in and looked at this is to look at, it's like, wow, Humboldt County, small rural area, has formed a bunch of JPAs. And, and, and so, it has been very effective at doing that. And so, why not do that relative to implementation of the Climate Action Plan? And, and so, the consultant didn't really try to dictate how that went, but the local agencies involved, HCOG involved, the other JPAs really looked at it and said, yeah, that, that makes sense. And so, it's being explored.
Yes, Commissioner Kuriazi, please.
The, we've heard mention a few times tonight around Humboldt County as a carbon sink, and I believe the RCAP discusses or provides a measure for looking at that in the future. And I want to just, or check with staff if the plan is to look at that down the road, or, because I anticipate hearing additional public comment around being a carbon sink.
It absolutely is the plan to look at it down the road. It's staff's understanding right now that there's no accepted methodology to calculate that and include that into a climate action plan. So we want to be able to get to a place where we can begin to offer a quantification of it, and then be able to include that, identify that. We have applied for grants already at the county end to begin, to begin that work. It is troubling, and we recognize that many industries are, are using carbon sequestration, buying cap-and-trade credits. And, and, you know, we would hate to think that all that got bought up before we ever got to a place where the county got the benefit of its location. But the state has not given us an accepted methodology yet to say, yes, you can take credit for that.
Commissioner Mulder.
So I just want to clarify, are we going through the different, I mean, we don't have time to do it now, but like the different measures and stuff like that, are we, are you wanting us to voice concerns or anything like that, if we're already at like the end of our time?
I think what we really should do at this point is continue the workshop, and we'll see if we can find a bit of a hole in a meeting and bring this back and go through the measures, and really present them, and be able to walk through them, point by point. I think it's been important to look at the 30,000-foot kind of concepts, but, and then we'll dig into the individual measures before we get to a public hearing.
Then I'll bite my tongue till that time.
Okay.
I guess, I'm just kind of curious, I think there wasn't originally a plan to do a workshop. I'm certainly happy to do that if we want to add an additional workshop, but I just wanted to bring that up, that originally, that the plan was just to simply bring this to a hearing. So is that, is that desired by the commission as a whole to have an additional workshop? Or staff?
I, I guess I was responding to the concern that we haven't had a chance to go through the individual measures. And frankly, I would rather have that discussion, be able to flesh that out a little bit, and make the public hearing process a little bit easier.
Because I, me personally, I have questions about a few measures, and that's why I don't want to jump into that until we're actually there.
Yeah, I'd be happy to start that tonight, but I don't think we're going to finish that in a few minutes.
So I would say if you could find time between now and October, so that we're not delaying, you know, I, I don't know about you, but I feel some sense of urgency to get this done, so that we can actually be moving forward on some of the measures, I guess. I mean, if we're going to make progress by 2030, we need to sometime start.
Well, well, yeah.
That's not to imply that we aren't already starting on some of the measures, because I think we are, but, but we need a formal plan.
We will put this on meetings where there could be a hole, where we may not finish, go all the way till nine, and we'll just put this on as something that we could jump back into.
Okay.
We've got the meeting of the fourth, the meeting of the, the, yeah, the 18th, I think we're targeting for the McHaleville.
Yeah.
think we're targeting for the McKinleyville Town Center. And then, we're doing a workshop for McKinleyville Town Center, I think on the 21st of August. Then the fourth is a full planning commission meeting. We could look at putting this on at the end of that, to continue the workshop. And then, the 18th, we were looking at bringing the Town Center ordinance back. And depending on how much discussion there is on those, we can have a placeholder for this to, to be on those agendas.
And just to clarify, then, what we'd be, what we're contemplating would be not to update any of the materials, but just to continue this hearing that we started, based on the materials that were presented for tonight.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so therefore, no need for new public comment to be taken, right?
Correct.
There are no new information.
Well, right. But those of us who may have missed that the, strike-through version of this was emailed, would have a chance to look at it.
That's where my comments are from.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So, I don't know that the commission has any specific direction tonight for the planning director or staff, we'll just, we'll...
Should we make a motion to continue this workshop?
Yes, to...
September 4th, is that what I heard?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, yes, let's do September 4th.
Or should I say a date uncertain, so that way it gives staff flexibility?
This doesn't have to technically be noticed, but it's fair to the public to continue it to a day certain. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm debating whether or not the McKinleyville Town Center will take up the entire meeting of the 21st, in terms of a workshop. Okay, so let's go for the 4th.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue this hearing, or, not hearing workshop, to September 4th.
I'll second.
Have a motion, second.
So, just to clarify, for anybody listening who wants to continue in the participation, the next, like, the, it's possible, they will hear us deliberate on the 4th, but it will not come back for a final hearing, an additional public comment, until, was it the first meeting in October?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, a motion, a second, we'll take a voice vote, all is in favor of continuing this workshop. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. And I do see that, we got, you already, didn't even put report from director on the agenda, you already knew we were going to run long. Before we adjourn, I'm not going to be here, I just want to make clear, I've already announced that I will not be here for the August 21st meeting. Vice Chair, will you?
I will do my best to be here for the August 21st meeting, but there is a not-zero chance that I will be out for medical reasons.
Would it be appropriate to elect a alternate vice chair?
It might be. And I expect you will be out at some point for a period of time?
I anticipate likely being out for all of September, and then potentially the first meeting in October, depending on medical needs.
I would nominate Commissioner Levy to be an alternate vice chair.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll make the motion to nominate Commissioner Levy as an alternate vice chair.
I, I would happily do that. There is a chance that I might be not able to attend due to going out on a, on a wildfire, in the timeframe we're talking about, in September. So, I might not be the best choice, given that...
We'll start and not have a quorum pretty soon.
And I'll just add, I'll be out for all of September.
Oh, okay.
So I could, like, I could make the McKinleyville workshop on the 21st, but I can't make the, yeah, September 4th.
Only missing one meeting.
Can, can we just run through the meetings real quick?
Yeah.
So who will be here on the, that will be the 21st of August?
Oh, I guess, I guess if we're talking about the 21st, then, then I'm...
We're going to do one at a time.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, so it looks like we probably have a quorum there, and we could have, depending on the vote, an alternative chair for that, because Chair Scavdall and current Vice Chair West may have conflicts, or do, or do and or may. How about the September 4th meeting?
Not certain about that one.
So we've got four for that, okay. So with that being said, with a quorum of four, do, do you want to continue to have the workshop with only four people present? I'm not hearing any negative responses, so we'll, we'll just go there.
Yep, we'll have it. Commissioner Levy may be here, we don't know.
Yeah, I certainly hope to be here, I just, there's a chance.
Okay, and is there any problem with the 18th? Who's going to be here on the 18th? Okay, we've got four, four, maybe five.
September 18th.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So I think it's appropriate to have the, we had a nomination and a second for Commissioner Levy to be an alternative vice chair, but you may or may not be here on the 21st?
I, I think the 21st, I am, of August, I am actually certain to be here. It's the, the ones in September, I'm more uncertain.
That's the one that's more important for you to be a backup.
Well, it's the 21st that's the importance for the backup, that...
Next meeting.
Because that's the one that Chair Scavdall will miss, so, sure. I can, I can accept that for, at least for the purposes of August 21st, if that helps.
I am, right now, I'm going to go make sure, but I, so far I am. If not, you'll fix that on the 18, on the 21st.
We also have Thomas, he could, he could fill in.
Certainly.
Although you're experienced.
So, alternate vice chair, is it just for the 21st? I just want to be clear, or is it just?
I think it's just for the 21st.
So, yeah. Okay, so are we, do we need to amend the motion, that, to just be clear, Vice Chair Levy is just for the, alternate vice chair is just for the 21st? Okay.
Would that clarify, yes, I guess, I guess it was, Commissioner McFarland made the motion, but if you nominated me for the vice chair for the next August 21st meeting, yes.
All those in favor, voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Congratulations, Mr. Commissioner Levy. Meeting is adjourned.